Call this meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Today's invocation, Commissioner Andrews?
Sure, thank you. Good morning. Today, I'd like to take a moment together to reflect on the profound local tragedy that has impacted our community. In times of shock and grief, one thing we can do is hold still and acknowledge our shared suffering. So let's begin by acknowledging the life of Lawrence Boyd IV, a dedicated city employee, a neighbor who lived with and cared for his mother on the old Mission Peninsula. We acknowledge the terrible circumstances of his death while in service to our community just a few blocks from where we all sit here today. And we extend our deepest sympathy and unwavering support to his family and friends and to his colleagues in public service, particularly at the city. And let's further acknowledge that the alleged perpetrators are young people, also our neighbors. One attends Traverse City Central High School. And this adds complexity to the tragedy and extends our shock and sadness deep within our community to families, neighbors, teachers, and fellow students, heightening our sorrow and compelling us to look inward. So let us find grace and space to accept the harsh reality of Saturday night while also allowing the judicial process to unfold without prejudice. We can seek accountability and justice for Mr. Boyd while pursuing the truth with integrity. As we suffer these wounds in our hearts and as we turn to face this day, we know our work in this community must continue without turning away. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you.
Thank you. Clerk Shealy, whenever you're ready, roll call. No hurry.
Morris? Andrews?
Here.
Nelson?
Here.
Henchel?
I'm here.
Spence?
Here.
Walter?
Here.
Flynn?
Here.
McAllister? Seifert?
Here. All righty. Moving on to the approval of minutes, entertain a motion, I will.
So moved.
Support.
Excellent. I have a motion by Commissioner Andrews, support by Commissioner Henchel, approve of the minutes as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Fantastic. Clerk Shealy, first public comment, please.
Any person shall be permitted to address the meeting of the Board of Commissioners, which is required to be open to the public under the provisions of the Michigan Open Meetings Act. Public comment shall be carried out in accordance with the following board rules and procedures. Any person wishing to address the board may state his or her name and township or district. Providing a specific address is not recommended. Persons may address the board on matters or issues which are relevant and remain to county government as determined by the chairperson. No person shall be allowed to speak more than once on the same matter excluding time needed to answer commissioners' questions, if any. The chairperson shall control the amount of time each person shall be allowed to speak, which shall not exceed three minutes. The chairperson may, at his or her discretion, allow an additional opportunity or time to speak if determined remain unnecessary to the discussion. Public comment will be solicited during the two public comment periods noted in Rule 5.4, Order of Business. However, public comment may be received during the meeting when a specific agenda topic is scheduled for discussion by the board. Prior to the first public comment, the chairperson will indicate the topics on the agenda for which public comment will be accepted. Members of the public wishing to comment should raise their hand or pass a note to the clerk in order to be recognized and shall not address the board until called upon by the chairperson. The board shall not comment or respond to a person who is addressing the board. Silence or non-response from the board should not be interpreted as disinterest or disagreement by the board. Please be respectful and refrain from personal or political attacks.
Thank you. Anybody willing to speak? Please go to the podium. You don't have to raise your hand. Go on once, go on twice. All right.
Good morning, I'm Dave Petro. A few years back, I was among the great majority of Grand Traverse County residents who were surprised to see almost 100 acres of trees clear cut on the east side of the airport. Surprised because the airport was still a commission under some oversight from this county Board of Commissioners. That was before it became an authority. The justification for the clear cutting of thousands of trees was to prevent deer from jumping eight-foot fences and crossing onto the runways. I guess that explains why deer hunting is dropped up here, because it's really hard to shoot a deer that can jump over eight feet. Now, the Independent Airport Authority is a bit more honest about wanting to cut down more trees. So they don't need to pretend it is to stop ghosts from getting out of the cemetery and flying over the runway. It is just so they can expand the airport, and they don't really need our permission to do it. They just need us, the Grand Traverse County, to cosign the loan in case the plan flops and they can't pay the bond back. Why don't we, you know, we the taxpaying people? Why don't we get something out of these development deals, other than more traffic, more noise, and more risks? The airport expanded their runways by several hundred years a few years ago, closer to Garfield Avenue. But unlike every business north and south of there, they did not need to put in sidewalks. New SARA developments had to put in sidewalks, but the sidewalk ends where they meet airport land. Local citizens are forced to walk in snow, ice, and mud, or in the road along Garfield Avenue, because the airport only needs us when they need money. Do we really need an airport authority that doesn't even respect their closest neighbors? Maybe they should have been better neighbors before they came to us looking for a handout. I thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else at this time like to have a public comment? Go on once, go on twice, third time's the charm. Thank you. Move on to approval of agenda, entertain a motion.
So moved.
Moved.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Flynn with support from Commissioner Henchel to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Thank you, everyone. Ms. Shealy, consent calendar.
The purpose of the consent calendar is to expedite business by grouping nine controversial items together to be dealt with by one commission motion without discussion. Any member of the commission staff or the public may ask that any item on the consent calendar be removed and placed elsewhere on the agenda for full discussion. Such requests will be automatically respected. If any item is not removed from the consent calendar, the action noted, receive and file or approval, is approved by a single commission action adopting the consent calendar. A, receive. Number one, Department of Health and Human Services Pavilion, September 2025 Meeting Minutes. Number two, Housing and Homelessness Task Force, September 2025 Progress Report. Number three, Safe Harbor Shelter Utilization Report, October 2025. Number four, ARPA Status Report. Number five, National Community Survey. Number six, 2025 General Fund Financial Reports, October. B, approvals. Number one, Fiddler Technology Software Contract Renewal. Number two, Declare Parks and Facilities Vehicles Equipment Surplus. Number three, Health Department, Continuation of the Medical Director Services Agreement. Number four, Michigan Indigent Defense Commission Fiscal Year 2026 Grant Agreement, Approved Compliance Plan, and Renewal of MIDC Coordinator Agreement. Number five, Women's Resource Center 2% Grant Application. Number six, Father Fred Foundation 2% Grant Application. Number seven, ARPA Funding Reimbursement Request.
All right. So anything like to be removed? Wow.
Moved to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Henchel. And support, Commissioner Spence, can you roll call vote us, please? Clerk Shealy?
Of course. Andrews?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Henchel?
Yes.
Spence?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Seifert?
Yes. All right, 7A. We're going to do the Grand Traverse Conservation District Annual Report.
I believe Kofi is here to present the report. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Well, my name is Kofi, and I am from the Grand Traverse Conservation District. And as you all know, districts were created around the Dust Bowl era to help farmers farm in better ways, in ways that protected the land. But ever since, they have evolved to do much more than that, you know, especially the one you have in your county here. In Michigan, there are about 74 conservation districts. But I would tell you, the Grand Traverse Conservation District is probably one of the best. Yes, we do, we do quite a bit, and, you know, we've been around for a long time. And some people say age is just a number. But in the case of the district, a district that's going to turn 85 next year, age is not just a number. Eighty-five is the number of years we have care for this area. You know, making sure our airs are pure, our land is healthy, the food that we eat is healthy, the waters that we enjoy are pristine. Just last summer, I took a picture on one of our beaches and sent it to a friend in California. And he asked me, are you on vacation in Aruba? Because the water's so blue. You know, and I had to tell him, no, this is Michigan, you know, Traverse City. So I have with me today a number of the staff from the district, and they are going to share with you some of the things that we do. And believe me, it's not possible to condense everything that we do in this presentation. But what we want to do is just give you an idea of some of the things that have happened in this past year. And I will extend an invitation to you to come visit us anytime you want, you know, to see some of the programs that we run, to see some of the things that we do. So with me, they are going to wave at you so you can see who they are when I introduce them. We have Sarah from the conservation team. Next to her, we have Adam, who runs the agricultural department. And we have Irene and Miranda in the back from the communications, fundraising, and volunteers team. Then on the education team, we have Aspen and Rachel. So we're going to start with the education department, and Aspen is going to walk you through some of the things that they did this past year. So Aspen.
Sorry, Irene is going to make this full screen for us. You get a better picture. Thank you, Irene. Thank you. My name is Aspen Schupack, and I'm the education specialist at the Grand Traverse Conservation District. Through my role, I oversee, develop, and facilitate all of our K-12 programming, as well as our nature-based preschool program. And in the summer, I'm an assistant camp director. At GTCD, we have the privilege of inspiring not only our community, but the next generation of conservation leaders. Through hands-on, nature-based programming, we open a gateway to the natural world for children, families, and adults alike. And we do this in a variety of ways. The first one being our weekly nature programs for families and preschoolers. These focus on building confidence in both children and adults while creating lasting connections to their local environment and community. Our community programs bring people together to learn, explore, and celebrate the outdoors. And collaboration is at the heart of what we do. By partnering with local organizations, we provide high-quality educational opportunities that are both engaging and accessible for everyone. Our summer nature day camp immerses children in the natural world. So campers explore, discover, and learn alongside natural resources professionals through local partnerships, sparking curiosity and environmental stewardship that can last far beyond summer. And then through our Nest Field Trip Programs, Nature Education for Students and Teachers, we connect classroom learning to real-world experiences. All of our field trips align with both Michigan and national next-generation science standards, so we're able to give teachers the academic support they need while connecting thousands of students to nature through hands-on outdoor education. So by the numbers, GTCD welcomed around 3,000 students to the Natural Education Reserve this year. 10% of those students came from as far away as Ann Arbor and Kalamazoo. And they traveled based on continued partnerships that we've built over time to experience the unique learning opportunities that the Natural Education Reserve provides. In the past year alone, our volunteers have guided 16% of all TCAP students through hikes and environmental education activities, helping create a sense of place and belonging for those students in nature. I'm going to skip forward in the slide just a moment so you can see this. One of the highlights for students and volunteers alike is the Discovery Boardwalk, and this is a living laboratory designed for both children and adults. With multi-height railings, as you can see in the photos, and two teaching platforms, this allows for up-close exploration of the aquatic ecosystem from both above and below the water. This is a place where a lot of students get to meet their first frog or get to watch turtles up close. These are moments that can spark a lifelong love of nature. And research shows that these moments truly matter. A study from the University of Glasgow found that children who spend just one hour a day in nature have a 50% lower risk of developing mental health issues later in life. This isn't just playtime. This is an investment in well-being, focus, and resilience. Our nature day camp welcomed 250 campers this year from northern Michigan and beyond. And we also piloted two new programs this summer, helping to expand our age range. So our Introduction to Camp program welcomed five-year-olds for their very first experiences catching frogs, playing in the creek, or climbing trees, while our Junior Counselor Program welcomed 12- and 13-year-olds, many who started attending nature day camp at the age of six, to develop leadership, teamwork, and mentorship skills while giving back to our younger campers. By expanding this age range, we're nurturing nature connections that start earlier and last longer, building confidence, character, and a generation of lifelong stewards. Through Project Learning Tree, Project Wild, and Project Water Education Today Certification Workshops, GTCD empowers formal and informal educators to bring environmental learning into their classrooms and communities. So if I could have you just look at this photo right here, the woman all the way at the back with glasses and moose antlers, her name is Kelsey. She is one of our participants, and she first joined one of these workshops as a homeschool mom looking for ways to weave nature into her children's education. That one experience inspired Kelsey to start a local nature-based homeschool program that has now grown into a nonprofit called the Nomi Forest School. Today, Kelsey is fundraising to build an outdoor education center in Manistee, magnifying the impact of one workshop into a movement that can inspire hundreds in her community. And then right here in our own backyard, our new amphitheater and ADA Accessible Family Path have become gathering spaces where people of all ages and abilities can connect, celebrate, and reflect. And you can see our amphitheater right there on the bottom right. That is one of our summer staff members and campers preparing for our very first talent show there this summer. This talent show filled the amphitheater with so many families that we had to bring out all of our extra picnic blankets to accommodate everyone. And this shows just how powerfully nature can bring community together. This picture is also one of our flagship programs and one of our highlights of this year that Adam will tell you a little bit more about. We collaborated with the ag team and Northwest Ad Services to create a farm-to-school program that aligns with next-generation science standards to connect kids to the food that they're eating. Through every program, partnership, and interaction, GTCD strives to create inclusive, community-centered experiences that foster environmental stewardship while strengthening our connection to the natural world. Thank you.
Good morning. I am Adam Brown. I'm the agricultural program coordinator, and I have the pleasure, like Kofi mentioned, conservation districts have always been steeped in agriculture, and real Grand Traverse Conservation District is still carrying that torch really strongly. And we do that through these many programs you see here. We have three valuable and very talented technicians working in the field, helping farmers and producers, and one is the Produce Safety Technician. And that is a program through MDAHR that is dedicated to providing on-farm technical assistance for fresh produce farmers in the region, and this is a free voluntary and confidential service for these farmers and producers. They do this through a free tool to help growers through produce safety risk assessments, and they go to the farm and they help growers prepare and keep their food healthy, and they also do on-farm readiness reviews, which is a free voluntary service that prepares growers for any type of other food safety inspections. And then we have the Transition to Organic Partnership Program. We like to speak in acronyms in the conservation world. This is a USDA program that it has been strengthening organic farming in the region and helping growers transition more land to organic production and meet consumer demand for organic produce. These technicians pair experienced organic growers with mentees who are looking to transition their land to organic production. So another valuable program. There is, they're doing amazing work. It's a national program, and we have a technician right here in our office doing amazing work. And then we have the MEAT program, which has been around for a long time. This is the Michigan Agriculture Environmental Assurance Program, and they've since partnered with a regenerative agriculture program. So this is another great program that is ensuring that farmers are growing food in a safe and healthy way, and with all the agriculture in this region is super important. This regenerative ag portion of the new program is helping farmers with soil assessments and helping them implement some regenerative agriculture practices. Most of my work is with the Great Lakes Incubator Farm. This is a program focusing on the critical need of farmer succession, land access, and local, ultimately, local food resilience in the region. We provide hands-on training, land access, shared resources, and we're just here to inspire and help aspiring farmers start their business and give them a lift to get their business started and give them the education that they need to do so. And we're focusing on regenerative practices as well, because we feel the importance of not just maintaining farmland in the region, but growing it in a way that is sustainable to our natural resources. So for me, oops, excuse me. This, this program is more than just a place where food is grown. Every, every season, we're inspiring new growers to help them achieve their goals. And it's important in this region that we have fresh and healthy local produce. And with your partnership, we have this land-based program that's super unique, that is providing these resources to growers and help them launch their businesses and help give them the training that they need. Some big things that we did this year, we launched a farm training program. That's a seventh-month program where they work directly alongside me. I have 15 years of experience growing organic food. And we ran the Great Lakes Incubator Farm as a business, distributing to, through a local CSA, Farm Share boxes. But the majority of that food went to Local Food Rescue, who distributed that to local food pantries and meal sites in the region. So over the past two seasons, we were able to donate over 10,000 pounds of food, and we hope to increase that as a main mission of this program. Within that program, we did, education is a big part of it, so I taught over 20 educational sessions to this group in a classroom setting. And then there's the hands-on field setting where they're seeding, they're planting, they're weeding, and they're harvesting. And so they get all the tools they need and skills and resources they need to, to help them meet their farm business goals. We hosted, to expand that education, we did four community workshops on seed starting, cover cropping, soil health, soil testing and analysis. And that reached a different group of people, not just people in the program, but it helped reach a larger community in the Grand Traverse region, gardeners and just interested parties alike. And then we did, there's two main things that were a highlight of my year. I'm just going to travel back to this photo, where we brought out kindergarteners from Cortate Elementary School and to watch their smiling faces as they were, you know, smelling the herbs, digging these potatoes. It was truly a highlight to see these kids, just really understand where their food comes from and the joy of understanding what it takes to grow food and what it takes to get that on their table. There was another really fantastic tour with a culinary school. They came out, about 35 students, and asked amazing questions, and then took some produce home, some tomatoes and herbs and other things, and made a meal for their farm-to-school program in partnership with the Culinary Institute. So for me, this program, it just represents what can happen when you have education, conservation agriculture, and the community, and with your support, it's just a living example of stewardship, resilience, and a hope for a strong, healthy agricultural system in the region. So we appreciate your support, and the Great Lakes Incubator Farm is just as much as your project as ours, and we really appreciate it. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Sarah Vaughn, and I work as the Director of Conservation here at the Grand Traverse Conservation District. I'm going to give you a little bit of overview about our conservation team. I oversee a team of five conservation stewards, and we work across the county on over 2,500 acres of land. Part of the work that we do in land management is a lot of recreation management. We work on the river, the Borman Autoway River, for recreation purposes and restoration purposes. And we really just focus on providing access to our public spaces here in Grand Traverse County. In the last year, our team has worked over 1,200 hours at the Natural Education Reserve in Medali Parks for the county, that equates to approximately $80,000 worth of market value. So this morning, I'm going to talk to you about some of our highlights in 2025. In winter, we submitted a grant with the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation for about $60,000. This was in collaboration with our education team to continue our restoration efforts on the bottomlands of the Natural Education Reserve, post-dam restoration, and also in partnership with our education team to provide more educational signage and learning spaces for the students. The Discovery Boardwalk being kind of a main focal point, and an extension of that, we wrote into this grant to help bring students to the NER and to our natural spaces into the river. One of our biggest accomplishments in the spring, we partnered with the students of Greenspyr to plant a rain garden at Medali. If any of you have recreated at Medali, which I do frequently, before this was planted, there was a pretty big depression in some turf grass that didn't look so great. It pooled with water frequently, and there, we saw a need that could be filled. So one of our former employees wrote a grant in 2024 and was received funding to help support this project. We partnered with Greenspyr, as I had mentioned, and the students all designed a rain garden, yeah, rain garden design, and they voted on the best one, and that was implemented into this project. We also worked with the botanical gardens in this effort as well, in choosing the plants and how they be put in the ground. And our team did a lot of that project management in prepping the site area and working with the students on the day of to get the plants in the ground. It looks really amazing. I go out to Medali frequently, so I hope you do as well. But that was a great accomplishment and really a collaborative effort here in the community. Another project we've been working on closely with John is our wayside mapping. So the NER, since the removal of the dam, has been needing some updated maps and wayfinding when you're out on the trails. So John and I have been really collaborating closely on on the trails. So John and I have been really collaborating closely on designing new maps, getting all the information that we need. It's a lot more complex than one would think. I've not worked on a project like this before. But the hope is that in the spring of '26, we'll be able to implement all that new signage. There'll be new trailhead kiosks, wayfinding posts when you're out on the trails at intersections, and all new maps that update new trails that we've implemented, as well as, yeah, new trails that we've been implementing, as well as infrastructure like the Discovery Boardwalk and our autoway footbridge that I'll mention here later in my presentation. So another big project that we've been working on to help give the NER a facelift is we've been building a new overlook that is at the old Saban Dam North location. A lot of our overlooks and structures that were there when the Saban Pond was in place have become degraded and not safe for public use. So we've inventoried all of those locations and closed them off and deemed them not safe for public use and are working towards removing them and rebuilding necessary structures. The photo on the top right there is an updated version of our overlook at the Saban North location. You'll be able to see the autoway footbridge crossing, and it's right outside the Nature Center. We made sure to include the crush gravel ADA paths that connect to our Nature Playscape and at our Nature Center. Additionally, our team this summer finished installing all-new trailhead fencing. Again, more infrastructure that had just become degraded over time. And once we get our new wayside finding in place in the spring, all the NER trailheads will be looking really amazing. So another great event that we had, our team typically puts on two to three Work Bee events, which are volunteer events a year. And one of our biggest ones this past year in 2025 was our Earth Day Work Bee. Last year in 2024, I was approached by a member of the Traverse City Rotary Club, and they wanted to help co-write a grant that would receive funding for the district to then do something. And so we decided to put that effort towards our Work Bee event. And we were awarded $5,000. That also came with a $5,000 match from the Rotary Club to help purchase plants for our Earth Day Work Bee. It helped purchase plants and supplies and some, like, food and snacks for that day. It was one of our largest Work Bee events. We had over 75 participants. We had folks from, obviously, the Rotary Club and Habitat, local organizations, and a lot of our regular volunteers there as well. This was just a great way to connect with the community. We put over 1,000 plants into the ground at the bottomlands area. This also was, this also was in the location of where the Discovery Boardwalk was. Once the Discovery Boardwalk was finished, there was a lot of disturbed area. So we made sure to put in riparian plants in that location to help plant it up and make it look nice. It's really a wonderful spot if you guys would like to go out and check it out. And another way we engaged with our local community, following up in the summer, we were approached by another group through the Lake Louise Christian Summer Camp. And we hosted a group of students that helped us water the plants when the summer was a little bit dry to make sure that they could help survive. So this was a really great event all in all. And it's really wonderful to help get the community out of the NER. So one of our biggest projects we've been working on, that I've been so lucky to help act as a project manager on, is our autoway crossing. This has been a really big week at the district. To date, we are 70% done with the autoway crossing construction. Yesterday was a huge day. The bridge got delivered. So all of us staff got to go out and watch the bridge get placed right on that landing of that top picture there. It was incredible to see get trucked in and have all the construction crews lift it with a giant crane. And we're anticipating, weather permitting, that it will be put into place on Friday. So this has been a huge, huge accomplishment. Five years in the making of this team. I feel so lucky to be a part of helping to manage our construction crews and, you know, make sure everything's running smoothly. So we're really excited about this event. And our goal is for the spring of '26, we'll have another Work Bee event that we can actually walk across the bridge and go plant trees on the other side of the river. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Irene Stibas, and I'm the Communications and Development Specialist at the district. And I'm just going to give a quick, very quick update on the fundraising campaign for the autoway crossing footbridge. So our campaign total for the bridge is 1.5 million. And you can see here the amounts we've raised, we've raised in each category. So private grants, government grants, corporations and individuals. So in total, we have raised just shy of 1.4 million, meaning we just, we have just 167,000 left to finish out this campaign. So as Sarah mentioned, you know, five years in the making, we are so excited to be right at the finish line and are looking forward to reporting that we've closed this out. And I'm going to return this back over to Kofi to answer any questions. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. This is about what we've been up to. You know, as they say, the bridge is probably the largest project we've undertaken as a district, to the tune of $1.5 million dollars that we had to go out and raise. And that has gone really well with the support of the community. You know, the county helped. You know, John was instrumental in us running a trust fund grant, a grant that we received, you know, for $400,000. And we are just moving forward. So we're happy to take any questions you may have.
Any questions? Commissioner Walter?
Got a few questions. So the bridge is, it arrived and it'll be installed Friday. When will it be open for use? Or what do you, what do you anticipate? I know there's restoration work that needs to happen, but do you anticipate an actual use date?
Use date, not exact date, by spring 2026 is when we are hoping to be able to actually walk on it.
Okay.
Yeah. Everything is weather dependent, but so far, knock on wood, everything has been on track. You know, even the delivery yesterday, for example, this bridge was coming from North Carolina. And anything can happen in between because we're coming on three different trucks. But all three trucks made it. And we're supposed to be at 10 o'clock in the morning. And somebody was watching out for us at 10 o'clock. All three trucks were there with the three pieces of the, of the bridge on it. It was amazing to see. They had this huge crane, biggest crane I've ever seen in my life. More of these pieces that were weighing, you know, thousands of pounds. And if you have time on Friday morning, it's going to be early in the morning, that's when they are going to actually place the bridge. So what they did is, the bridge came in three pieces. They are going to assemble them and then use a bigger crane, even bigger than what they brought yesterday, to lift this thing and put it on the abutment. I don't know about you, but I'm going to be there to watch this.
Early Friday, early Friday morning?
Yes. 8:30 is what they are shooting for. So we are going to be there between 8:00 and 8:15, you know, to be ready to watch this. We'll have our coffee ready. I don't think we need popcorn. It's too early, so.
It's never too early for popcorn.
Well, it's exciting. That's an awesome project. I have a couple of questions not connected to the bridge, but so we had an opportunity to hear the Michigan State University Extension Annual Report a couple of weeks ago. And some of their programming related to, like, agriculture and education outreach and seems to be somewhat similar. I'm a little confused now who does what. And I wonder what kind of collaboration it is, or if there are very specific things that you do that they don't do, or what that looks like for people related to that space.
Yes. So we partner with several organizations. And we very often do what makes sense. And like we do stuff with the USDA, for example, we do stuff with the Michigan State. So it just depends on which programs align with what we are trying to do and what they are trying to do. So sometimes we work with some organizations, if it makes sense, and sometimes not.
Okay. And I just want to say thanks. My kids are teenagers now, but we spent a lot of time at the Nature Center, summer day camps, programs in that indoor community space, you know, learning about all sorts of things. And we still enjoy lots of hiking and biking down there now, too. Not biking on the hiking trails, but you know, I am aware, but I'm excited about the wayfinding system because it is somewhat confusing down there to know exactly where you need to go. So all really good things, and thank you so much for your work. We really appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you for the feedback. Thank you.
And Commissioner Spence?
Yes, that was a great presentation. It was really valuable and meaningful. Thanks to all of you that put a lot of work into it. I had the same question as Commissioner Walter, it's actually about the overlap or the cross coordination with MSU Extension and their food program, their agriculture program, because they did mention that they collaborated with you. So it would just be a nice thing to, like, share how you both work together, because I know there's got to be something going on. And it's, and it's important to me because I really support MSU Extension. They do a great, they provide a great value to the community with some of their programs. And it's nice that they collaborate with you in some way that I'm not really sure about, but I can find out, too. I wanted to thank you for the Medali Park project. I know that so well. My children were part of the rowing group, and it was just an area that really needed to be looked at. I don't know who identified it, but I think it's a great idea. And thanks so much for showing people what a rain garden is and what it can do and all the benefits of that. And then, Adam, is that your name? Sorry. You had an equipment column over here that talked about an industrial composter, biochar kiln, along with other things. Do you have the biochar kiln yet? Or is this a, is this like a wish list of equipment?
These are things that we've, we've got. So since the inception of the program, we've invested almost a half a million dollars in land improvements and equipment and tools and resources for the farmers. All these things that we see here are things that we've purchased and are available for, and they're dual-purpose. They're for, you know, soil regeneration of the sandy soil we're working with, and they're also educational tools. So, you know, the no-till drill I used in the cover crop workshop to see how you can seed without disturbing the soil and improving soil practice, soil health practices and things like that.
Interesting. I, not a lot of people sell biochar around here. I had to go to Frankfurt to buy my...
We might be, we're not going to sell it. We may give it away, but that's something we're going to probably demonstrate and incorporate into our curriculum or future workshops.
Neat. Okay. So you have that. Great. Well, thanks again. I thought this was really valuable.
And I can probably touch on a few things with the extension question. I will say that the curriculum that I developed is pretty unique and probably doesn't align too much with what Extension is doing. But we, we did partner with Extension with Parker Jones, who's no longer with Extension, but he was on the GLIF Committee. And so I'll reach out to different partners who may have more experience than I for, in certain topics. So he came in and did a workshop on crop budgeting, for instance, and helped people and was a free resource for participants in the program. So there's partnership, and then there's a uniqueness of what we're doing as well.
Thank you.
Yep.
Commissioner Flynn?
Like Commissioner Walter, my children are older. I almost don't even have any teenagers anymore. My youngest turns 20 very, very soon. So I appreciate all the outside time that we got to spend with the Conservation District. But also, I want to brag a little bit because it is in District Two. You know, sometimes you see only Airport Road, and you don't remember how beautiful it can be right past over Up Cass. So go out there and visit if you haven't gone out there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for all you do.
Oh, thank you.
Any more comments, questions, concerns for those wonderful people?
I have a question for Adam. In your presentation under MEAT, you said that you have recycled 300-plus ag tires? What do you do with them?
So that is, so the MEAT program is always done, they do a plastic recycling. So all the containers, the nutrients and the chemicals that farmers use in the region, those all get recycled. Another program is the recycled ag tires. And I believe they go and they're reused, and I think they're made into pallets, I believe. Yeah. So they, they contract, they bring this big semi, and local growers use this as a resource because you can't take them anywhere else. So they get them off their land. They're not leaching, like, stuff into the soil. So that's a pretty important program that's been going and for many, many years. And it's a valuable resource to the community.
Thank you for that.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you so much for your report and being here today with us.
Thank you.
Excited. I'm bringing popcorn. I don't care how time it is. All right. So we're going to move right along. So you may have no items removed from the consent calendar. Nine departmental items, nine A. Commissioner Eldger?
Yes. So there is a lake level control structure in place at Silver Lake. There is a court order that is associated with that structure. And in 2024, the Drain Commissioner's delegation of authority expired, and he had previously delegated his authority to this gentleman. And this gentleman wants to maintain the control structure. He wants to do so as he has. And I have worked with Matt, and it is okay for this board to approve the delegation of authority. Is Mr. Slade, I don't have the agenda item up.
Strange.
Strange. To approve for Mr. Strange, and we would have to write an agreement like we did with Green Lake Township. I have included that agreement with you as a reference point. It doesn't have to be word for word. I don't think that Mr. Strange is asking for compensation, but there should be some level of consideration for Mr. Strange's efforts. If you want to answer any questions that I, that you have. And Commissioner Spence is, he did reach out to Mr. Spence and brought this item to our attention. So I don't know if Commissioner Spence has any further.
I did visit the site yesterday with Mr. Strange and Andy Smits, our Drain Commissioner, and got to have a hands-on experience with, like, what it takes to clean this drain and monitor the valve that has to be exercised. And we went through the whole process of what it takes. And I really appreciate his willingness to do this as a volunteer. They do have a strong Silver Lake Improvement Association, which he's not a part of, but the Silver Lake Improvement Association is dealing with milfoil and other things around Silver Lake. So it's a volunteer effort. They've got a really good website that's updated frequently. And so I kind of see this as an extension of the volunteer efforts to maintain the quality of Silver Lake. And this high watermark that is critical for, this is why the drain exists, to keep the water level monitored. The high-level mark is really important because of the zoning. Sometimes people will go to ask for variances on their zoning to, to build closer to the water table. And the water table's very low right now, but if it were to come up really to be high, then we're talking about issues with septic fields and septic systems. We're talking about basements that flood. So this drain maintenance is critical. And I appreciate Mr. Strange offering to take care of it. I hope that I have illustrated, like, how important the drain is to the lake level of Silver Lake and helping it maintain a certain level.
Mr. Walter?
Just a couple of questions, because I wasn't here in 2021 to understand what transpired then. But, and I'm trying to understand the, and is Matt here? Is he on?
Gordon Love is here.
Okay.
He is, Matt is not available, but Mr. Love is here.
Just for kind of public benefit and our benefit, too, just maybe a little overview of kind of the, for lack of a better word, liability and responsibility and authority. And it seems like it is the Drain Commissioner's responsibility and the authority was delegated. But what sort of the ongoing, like, we can delegate this to him, and it sounds like he's doing a fantastic job. I don't have any concerns. But what, what sort of relationship does he continue to have with the Drain Commissioner, or should he have, and maybe with, with us? Like, what does it just look like from a practical perspective? And, and also, I guess, the kind of liability, responsibility piece of it is interesting to understand as well. So maybe that's for Gordon. Can you hear us, Gordon? Mr. Love?
I can, I can hear you. Yeah. Good morning, everyone. I can answer to the liability piece. I'm obviously stepping in for Matt this morning and kind of... I'm obviously stepping in for Matt this morning and kind of reviewing this as far as the practicality. Maybe Nate can speak to that as how it's kind of operated. I don't mean to put you on the spot there, Nate, as far as how it's operated in the past since 2021. The liability piece can be handled through the contract or the agreement that would be signed that would transfer liability to the individual. If you look at the sample Duck Lake agreement that was provided, there's a liability provision in there, transferring it, that would take it out of the county's responsibility for liability. So, the individual through the agreement would be taking on that as part of the maintenance and operation. So, the county could certainly cover themselves through the agreement that way.
Like, I can address the, kind of the flow, the way of operation. So, since the creation of the lake level structure in 1960, there's an court order that goes with it, and that order requires that the county, the Board of Commissioners, is responsible for the maintenance of that structure. The Act does allow you to delegate that authority. So, in 2021, it was, I think, believe Drain Commissioner Smits brought it to the attention that he had not received any delegation of authority, so this board delegated him authority for a period of three years. And in November of '24, in concert with the elections, I think, he lost that delegation. So, it is, you can re-delegate that authority to the body that you choose to delegate that authority to. That body is required to maintain the drain. It's always our responsibility. We are always on the, we're always required to be responsible for the maintenance of the structure as well as the cost associated with the maintenance of that structure. There is a special assessment district that was established in 1981 that is being used to maintain the drain. So, there is, this board created that special assessment district, so it doesn't come out of the general fund. It's, their funds maintained within our finances.
Commissioner Henshaw?
Thank you. First, I want to commend the community spirit of Mr. Strange and being willing to take the reins on this and be responsible for it. My first concern is if there was a problem and there was liability, what would Mr. Strange's resources be? Would he be personally liable for damages associated with this? If he was somewhat accused of mismanaging the lake level and they suffered riparian damage of some sort, would that fall on him? Or is the county indemnifying him in this?
That's a good question for you, Mr. Love.
Yeah, as far as the, the county wouldn't indemnify him. One, the county, the county can't indemnify typically when it enters into these types of agreements. It's prohibited by law from doing so. So, as far as his personal responsibility, it would be through the contract, but to your point, what are his actual resources is actually a pretty good question. So, you know, if you look at what has been done historically or what you did with Duck Lake, now that was with a township. When you look at your other agreement you have in here, you know, you transferred the liability to third parties to the township. Here, the individual maintaining it, you'd be delegating to the, so you'd be delegating to the Drain Commissioner, Nate? Is that my understanding? And then, through the Drain Commissioner, or you'd go be straight to Mr. Strange? Is that the way this is being proposed?
It will go straight to Mr. Strange.
Okay. So, you know, you would be putting that liability on him, I suppose, for his maintenance of it. What his resources are, I don't, I couldn't speak to that. I'm not sure. Most people wouldn't have the resources to cover something like that, but...
With the agreement with Duck, Green Lake Township, that there were seven iterations of that agreement because of this exact reason. Like, what exactly was the township responsible for versus the county? So, if you look at Article One, and it's page eight of 11 in the item, the two bullet points that were very specific to that operation of that dam out in Duck Lake was there's boards there that have to be removed or added depending on the lake level. So, they want to be very specific, so we highlighted two functions of Green Lake Township for the Duck Lake Dam. We would do the same thing here. So, we just need to understand what it means for the control structure, what does he actually have to do? We would highlight that in the agreement, and that would be it. The county would be still responsible for any large-scale maintenance. So, if there was needing to be a pipe replacement, that's all on us. We would have to take care of that.
So, what I'm more concerned with is liability. Could we require a liability, require him to carry a certain amount of liability insurance and then compensate him an amount that would, you know, from the special assessment district, fund that insurance policy so that if, you know, God forbid there was ever a major problem, he, you know, he wouldn't be at risk, and, you know, if residents did suffer damage, there would be insurance in place to cover, something like that.
The Duck Lake Agreement does provide specifically, to your point, that there must be insurance, but also, to your point, it does not specify an amount. And obviously, there's a big difference in collectibility from a township versus an individual. So, I don't know if that's something that the county, but also, I just don't know if the person was, had, and this may be a question for Mr. Love. Let's say, worst-case scenario, right? High-water table, Mr. Strange is unable to maintain the dam and/or the clean out...
It's like a funnel. It's basically a funnel, yes.
Right, let's assume the funnel got blocked and for whatever reason, it was unclear to anyone until a hundred-year storm back-to-back. And now, you've got 1,000 homes on Silver Lake, some of which are too close and have flooding. And, and let's pretend like, sorry, Gordon, we'll get there in a second. Let's pretend like Mr. Strange has no insurance, right? Or he's just got his general homeowner's insurance. Does, are all those 1,000 homeowners on Silver Lake simply out of luck because we delegated this responsibility to somebody who is unable to insure to the extent that, there's a scenario?
Yeah.
That's a good scenario.
We got, we're looking at you, Mr. Love.
Yeah, no, I'm thinking. That's a, that's a, that's a very good scenario to bring up. You know, the county obviously has its, or could maintain insurance as well, but, you know, requiring him to have some sort of policy, I don't think would be the worst idea here. And, you know, typically, we would include that in an agreement. It doesn't look like all that was done in the prior one was just requiring maintenance of a general liability insurance. So, you could do that here, but you could potentially specify what those limits are or what you would want to see from him. Now, I don't know if that's something he could afford either, to be quite honest, but you certainly could require that.
But we would pay him to maintain the drain in an amount commensurate to the requirement.
Well, let me ask if, if Mr. Smits, our Drain Commissioner, has insurance or if he's covered by us, right? Like, let's say instead of sending it to Mr. Strange, we gave it to the Drain Commissioner. Who does, who then is insuring that? Because obviously, we're not having Andy go out and buy insurance for everything that's...
Right, I mean, that's for sure.
Right.
County, right.
Right. So, yeah, it would be covered that way with your Drain Commissioner. So, here, I mean, you would be bringing in a separate party, and yeah, I think, I think that would probably be your safest play would be to require him to have insurance and produce a copy of it.
Can we procure an insurance policy on his behalf?
I think so.
As part of the contract?
I mean, can we sort of back up, insure?
So, if I could, so MMRMA, that's our insurance carrier, we have a risk manager. They publish a risk transfer manual. Their risk transfer manual provides us detail on how we transfer risk based on the level of risk, so if it's high-risk, medium-risk, low-risk. So, that does have provisions on, here are the limits, who's responsible, how are we named as an additional insured? So, that would be the next step. I feel what we, we would need to review the transfer, risk transfer manual, talk to our risk manager, Matt Colson, who can probably advise, this is the policy needed, this is the insurance amounts. My, not, having known and worked with him for a long time, he would, he would probably say it's, it's Mr. Strange's responsibility to go out, find that insurance carrier who can meet the requirements specified in our risk transfer manual. We just need to have that conversation with him.
What language would you need, or, Mr. Love, would our administration need from our board to ensure that we are being as protect, he and we are being as protected to the, to the extent practical, right? It's impossible to protect ourselves 100% or him 100% against any potential issue, but is it, would it be, do you want to come back, or do you want us to take action? I guess that's the question, administration.
So, the last time we did this, this board directed the administration to create an agreement with Green Lake Township to maintain the Duck Lake control structure. We did that. That would be an appropriate direction to go today as well. To Mr. Love's point, there are other options that are more safe, so to speak, and that would be to re-delegate authority to somebody who is already within the county, whether that is the DPW or Mr. Smits or somebody else. That is a safe bet for the county. This does add a level of complexity to have a private resident maintain a control structure. But he's willing to do it. We're very grateful that he's willing to do it.
Go ahead, Commissioner Henshaw.
Yeah, I'll reiterate, yeah, I'm very grateful that he's willing to do it. I just want to make sure that, you know, it is the responsibility of this board to make sure this is right. When we delegated to Green Lake Township, they're another government entity. Government entities have a certain amount of immunity for the actions they take. An individual has fewer immunities and resources to assert, you know, even if legally there's a law that says he's not liable, he might still get sued, and he's got to prove he's not liable. He's still got expense laid out. So, I'd like the agreement to come back because of that. And I want to point out one more point, because it's an individual, and individuals become incapacitated, they travel, they get sick, they pass away. This says there's 180-day window notification to terminate the agreement. I think it should be much, much shorter, because if this person's unable to do it for whatever reason, and we have a water event where something needs to happen real quick, we need to have, be able to say, all right, we're taking this back over, or the Drain Commissioner's going to take it back over. So, those are my thoughts. I'd like to see it come back.
So, any other comments before I come back to TJ?
I guess my question is, do we know if the Drain Commissioner let this lapse, or if the Drain Commissioner does not want to do this? Because it seems like we would like the drain, it would make more sense, the Drain Commissioner is responsible for the drains in the county, and this is a drain in the county. We've raised salaries, right? We've, we're now thinking about providing trucks. We're trying to empower that, that office to do things like this, and the, and the, these liability questions are just non-issues when it's through those, those channels. And I guess I would want to know, why don't we just go back to the Drain Commissioner?
Go ahead, Commissioner Walter.
No, I, the same questions, and also, it would have been helpful to have him here today. I don't know why he's not here. It seems like this is his wheelhouse. I don't know if he wasn't invited or what, but I would like this to come back and invite Mr. Smits to come to share a little bit more information, and we can have a discussion with him on what's going on. And I don't know, maybe Mr. Strange would, it would be nice to also have him here to speak for himself about his interest in it.
I think it's a good idea. I think personally, I'm going to agree with all good points with Commissioner Henshaw and Commissioner Andrews. This is a long way around the barn for something that's very simple as, hey, Andy, take care of the drain. That's the job. So, in any agreement, I'm not going to vote any agreement until the details are worked out, because I appreciate everybody. We have, we just had a report from folks that are involved in our community, and I love that. But there, we have a responsibility to the 97,000 taxpayers, or 95 or 99, whatever it is this week, that, and especially the thousand or so people, and it's not a thousand, it's under 1,000 people that are on Silver Lake, that, hey, this guy helped us out, but now your house is actually in the lake instead of on the lake. We have a responsibility to look at how those things are, and it's, and I really appreciate Mr. Strange's desire to help. We have a bigger responsibility than that, so we need to get that ironed out. So, does anybody want to make a motion to direct the administrative staff to figure that out, come back?
So, moved.
I'll second that. You got that, Bonnie?
Figure that out and come back.
That's right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay.
I was, before we voted, I was hoping we'd get any questions from administrator.
We can do that. It is the responsibility of this board to delegate authority for the control structure. So, you, you can choose to direct us to do exactly this, or you can re-delegate to the Drain Commissioner. I don't know that he wants to, I don't know. I haven't had that conversation with Mr. Smits. I don't know that he wants to do it or if he has the expertise to do it. I don't know. But there was a point in time where he was in front of this board, and there was this discussion about the drain authority, and it was left alone. So, we had to go to Green Lake Township to manage the Duck Lake structure. So, we can reach out to Mr. Smits and inquire about this process if that's what you would like us to do.
I think it's a good idea, because there's a lot of unknowns. I also saw culverts that are disintegrating yesterday that are going to need county attention sooner than later that we should plan for, and they're not directly related to cleaning out that funnel with a screen over it, which is, seems pretty straightforward, because it's just a way to take care of high water when it, in high-water events, it basically just moves it down. I don't see that he would mess anything up or cause any issues, but, but there's also things that are connected to it. And I think it would be a really good, a presentation would really give people a better understanding of how this all works.
I guess I'm also concerned about the logistics. We have a special assessment district, we have funding. Someone has to contract with Elmers or somebody to come clean that funnel out. Is that us? You know, who's, how does that all work? It seems like, my instinct is that I would prefer this to be a Drain Commissioner responsibility, the consistency, the uniformity across the county of the 11 county drains, but I would just like to hear if there's a reason that it shouldn't go that way.
One last thing, though. I'm trying to think of other examples where there's someone who has a responsibility, like our Drain Commissioner, who uses volunteers. I know there's other, well, like the, our parks, like you're in charge of our parks, Mr. Chase, but we have a volunteer network of people who help, so I guess we could maybe make this contract more the responsibility of our Drain Commissioner, who could then use volunteers like Mr. Strange to do things like keeping the debris off of the screen that allows the funnel to work.
Hence, we made the motion for the administration to come back with some solid numbers and some options, and that would be including the Drain Commissioner. Commissioner Nelson?
Yeah, I, I feel like we're a little bit blindfolded here and shoot from the hip, and, and I'm not sure that, that, I don't know if the vote actually went through, I guess it did, but I'm wondering if we shouldn't request that the Drain Commissioner come and explain it to us? I think I know some of the things that he would say and why this is a good idea, but I don't want to, I don't want to make any suppositions about what he would say, so let's...
Well, I, in my interpretation of the motion that was passed...
No, we haven't voted yet, I don't think.
We did.
We didn't, we didn't get the nades in.
No, we stopped, so we can have discussion.
Did we vote, Bonnie?
No.
Well, we can revote, then. But in that motion, the whole idea of that is, is that he's going to come in here. We're not going to do something about a drain or a dam without him coming in and saying, this is how this is going to work, or not going to work. And when I say he, I mean the Drain Commissioner.
As the board, could we just not take this up or table it and ask for more information from the Drain Commissioner?
You could make a friendly amendment.
Well, he's asking us to table the motion or...
Not, or not take it up, you know, just like we're...
I think that, I thought the motion was to invite the Drain Commissioner to...
Well, that wasn't Seifert's exact motion. He said basically, go get information. It wasn't specific, but I didn't, that was my idea that he seemed to agree with, but it wasn't in the motion.
So, is that a friendly amendment to include inviting the Drain Commissioner back?
Well, but we technically, do we, we don't have a vote. Is that technically correct?
We haven't voted yet.
No.
Okay, so there's no vote, so...
Yeah.
But there is a motion.
I'll accept that as a friendly amendment.
So, what is the motion now?
Yeah.
The motion would be that we are going to direct administrative staff to come up with solid numbers. administrative staff to come up with solid numbers to protect the county and the residents, and to invite the Drain Commissioner to also publicly come and weigh in, giving us options to take care of the Silver Lake drain.
That was the motion I made, yes.
There you go. And I seconded it.
Okay, so, hasn't the administrator already kind of brought this to this group, and this group has to make the decision?
Yeah, but we're, we're, basically, we need more information.
It is the decision of this group. It is not the Drain Commissioner's decision. His duties statutorily are the county drains, not lake levels. Lake levels are this board.
That is true.
Traditionally, been delegated to the Drain Commissioner, but not always.
And I, I assume he's going to say that it is not his statutory requirement, which is why he is looking to have a person, so, but I.
That's why I'd love for him to come back and bring back more information, and we can discuss it with him, and then we can decide how we want to delegate, delegate that authority.
Then we still have the issue of, we have a private citizen doing something that is arguably a pretty important job, what are our county protections and citizens' protections related to that?
Right, I think that was part of it.
So, but the challenge that we're in today is that it's no one's delegated responsibility to maintain Silver Lake. Sitting here today.
That sounds like, yeah.
It ended in November of last year. It's been a year, luckily, nothing terrible happened, but, so one option, so we've got a bridge problem, right? We've got an interim concern that's in front of us now, and I don't think something's going to happen before we hear from the Drain Commissioner, but if it did, I would be an attorney watching this meeting, and I know, you know, some of the people, I'd start thinking about suing, who didn't take any action, because it's legally no one's responsibility right now to maintain that drain. So, one option is.
I think it's the county's responsibility.
It's our responsibility, right, and we haven't given it to anyone, so unless the chair is going down to check out the funnel at Long Lake.
I was envisioning, yeah.
It is effectively no one's. So, one option is that we could, I believe, to Commissioner Hensel's point, statutorily today, pass a motion to continue the delegation to the Drain Commissioner, consistent with how it used to be, until such time as, as we can get a more formal approach, because then it's at least someone's responsibility now. Is that fair to, the Drain Commissioner, I don't know who it's fair to, but unless somebody on this board wants to take the responsibility, we've got to kind of give this to somebody. This is a floating liability.
Or county facilities.
You're proposing continuing the existing.
Well, it expired, but, you know.
Well, that's true, it did expire, yeah.
Renewing the previous delegation until such time as we can come up with a permanent solution. Is that, Mr. Love, is that a backstop opportunity that we can something, or approach?
I, I, yeah, from what I'm hearing, I mean, I think you hit the nail on the head. Right now, it's just, it expired in 20, November of 2024, so right now, nobody, I mean, technically, this board is responsible, but I don't think anybody's been doing it on a formal basis. Sounds like maybe Mr. Strange has on an informal basis, is what he's been doing, so you could put a stopgap measure in place, just via a motion to cover that until you can come up with a permanent solution, you know, maybe at your next meeting, or, you know, worst-case scenario, maybe a month from now, or something like that. So, yes, you certainly could do that. That, that would make sense.
And we could delegate it either to the Drain Commissioner, consistent with how we did it five years ago, however many years ago, or we could temporarily delegate it to Mr. Strange.
Yeah.
Who's indicated a willingness to do it, knowing that arrangement isn't ideal, but.
Yeah, but given all of those unknowns about liability, I don't, I don't want to formally delegate it yet. I'd rather the first option where we temporarily re-delegate it to the Drain Commissioner, knowing that Mr. Strange is still continuing to do it.
Well, that, and that's the thing, to Commissioner Spencer's point, we have volunteers for all this, but all those volunteers are underneath somebody's responsibility umbrella, if you will. So, and this was the Drain Commissioner's responsibility, and he delegated it to Mr. Strange, any liability was under the Drain Commissioner's liability. So, what we're doing is we're saying, hey, we're just going to delegate Mr. Strange to do it, then all of a sudden, all that liability umbrella is now on Mr. Strange's behalf, which probably isn't very fair to Mr. Strange. So, if we're, so what Andy, what Commissioner, Drain Commissioner Smits does after we delegate it back to him, that's his business.
Well, and, yeah, the point I was going to make is that possibly the Drain Commissioner could then, but he, he could give it to Mr. Love, but I think the Drain Commissioner would say that it's no different than turning it over to the Parks Department, and the Health Department, the county clerk, you know, we're randomly assigning it to a department that doesn't have the statutory requirements to do this, so.
But we're in a position where we, we kind of got to give it to somebody, and it does seem like, because it's been done in the past, to the Drain Commissioner.
I understand, I understand that.
He clearly has the skill set, right? Like, we, we think it's within his wheelhouse in this instance. I think your point is well taken. You know, it's, it's somewhat arbitrary, but it's not completely arbitrary.
The Drain Commissioner could refuse to do it as well.
He could, but let him come here and tell us that. So, who wants to amend the motion?
So, I'll make a motion. Do we have a motion?
No, we have a motion on the table already.
We have to.
You could just amend it, change it.
Vote on it or clear the floor?
We could, we could vote on it.
Vote to clear the floor?
Yeah.
Support.
All right, wait, 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 wait. Okay, we're clearing the floor, which sounds good. Since you guys went all over the place.
Motion by Seifert, seconded by Hensel to clear the floor.
So, you're going to take a vote on that?
Yeah.
Yeah. I like that.
All right, so everybody ready? Any more comments on the motion to clear the floor? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. All righty, Commissioner Andrews?
So, then I'll make a motion that we adopt a resolution consistent with the Resolution 89, 2021, and delegate the duties to operate and maintain, maintain the lake level control structure for Silver Lake to the Drain Commissioner until such time as our administration can bring us a permanent, long-term solution.
Second.
Discussion.
Does that mean Mr. Strange is forbidden from touching it until such time?
No.
Nope.
Okay.
The Drain Commissioner could.
Delegate Mr. Strange to do it, absolutely.
Just like the letter that's in here that he sent before, he could just.
Yeah, they, I believe they have an existing relationship, or that's been the case.
You want to put a time limit on this, so that it comes back in front of us to?
I just don't know how long it's going to take. And, I mean, we could, we, but it seems like it's going to be within six months? It's a six-month delegation, is that too long, not long enough?
Let's just leave it open-ended, because it could be in two weeks, and it could be in 12 weeks.
Right.
Well, yeah, I mean, I, I like a timeline, I like, like to put a date on it, otherwise, things do drag on. Knowing, like, you have to bring it back within three months is great, I think, that gives us.
Do you want a friendly amendment for 90 days?
Yeah.
Accepted.
I accept it. I accept it as well.
You all set, Ms. Shealy?
Yeah, I just want to repeat it.
Please do.
Moved by Andrews, seconded by Walter.
Flynn.
Flynn. With her outfits. To adopt a resolution consistent with Resolution 89, 2021, and delegate the duties to the Drain Commissioner until such time as the administration can bring us a permanent solution within 90 days.
So, it was, delegate to the Drain Commissioner the duties to operate and maintain the lake level control structure for Silver Lake for 90 days.
Operate and maintain, operate and maintain can.
Lake level control structures.
Aye.
For Silver Lake. I guess it's singular, but whatever.
All right, I think we have it.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Ms. Shealy. Let's take a 10-minute break.
Thank you. There was a little more. [inaudible][1149.87]
When we have.
I love that. I had no idea. Crystal for dinner.
Are we back? Three, four. Let's do a quickie thirty second. Is it Friday yet?
No.
Holy cow. Is it too late? Is it too late to protest daylight savings? Garbage. Copy. Wait for Commissioner Nelson to get back in a mo- Said something about it and I'm already gonna be.
Put that on my calendar here.
Shit, we only need to be ready till seven thirty.
That's interesting. Like, I'm only hosting better people.
Oh, my God. All right, I'm gonna call this meeting back to order. Seeing that we're all here, sort of. All right, so we're gonna move on to nine B. Director Chase, please.
Good morning, Board. Thank you for the opportunity to be here today and to talk about our two thousand twenty-six capital improvement plan. And before I get into the two thousand twenty-six piece, I'd like to give you a little bit of background and kind of go backwards. Talk a little bit about our buildings and talk about what's happened in two thousand twenty-five to give you a little bit of context. And then move into the two thousand twenty-six from there. So our buildings, we've got ten, ten, I'll call them major buildings, or I won't say significant because that implies that other ones are not significant. But ten major buildings that we work with. And those are listed here, and those buildings account for about three hundred and seventy-three thousand square feet of space under roof. They've got a pretty wide age range with our health department, that building, sorry, the health services building being thirteen years old. And then our oldest building, the one in the picture here, our historic courthouse, at a hundred and twenty-five. So if you average all those buildings together, we're looking at a fifty-one-year average life for our buildings. You take out the outliers at the thirteen and the hundred and twenty-five, and we're still at about forty-three years average for our buildings. So our buildings definitely have aged. They've shown that, and we've put some things in place to help with those. We'll talk about some of that today. I would be remiss if I didn't give a big shout out to our facilities teams and, of course, our parks teams as well for all the work that they do in maintaining the buildings on a daily basis. And just a little bit of background on some of those things that you see here. We work off a work order system right now. And that work order system basically is requests come in from each of the buildings. I've got a light bulb out, or I've got this, that, the other thing, whatever it may be. As those requests come in, those are filtered through our system, and then they're parsed out to two different members of the team. So two thousand twenty-four, we completed one thousand two hundred and forty-seven work orders that were documented in the system. As of the writing of this presentation, we were at eleven eighty-three, and we are on track. If I average that out for the days, then we're on track for just shy of fourteen hundred work orders for the year in two thousand twenty-five. And so that's a hundred and twenty-five or so, a hundred and thirty over the current year. Now, one thing I have to mention is that that's what's documented in the system. That does not include when, for example, Jason, our plumber, is in the jail and someone taps him on the shoulder and says, hey, can you do this, that, that, and the other thing while you're here? So we know that those kinds of things happen. It's just a matter of trying to get that stuff documented. So there's more than meets the eye in this particular number. In terms of work order categories, our system doesn't give us the ability to cleanly come up with that right now. More on that in a minute here. But I was able to take an extract from the system and get an idea just roughly. So I've put some estimates together of what categories these fit into. So our mechanical electrical plumbing account for the majority of what you see there, so about thirty percent of our requests are electrical related, twenty-five percent plumbing related, and then I'll skip the PM for just a second, fifteen percent mechanical related. The preventative maintenance kind of incorporates all of that stuff, and the preventative maintenance is the stuff that we're doing before it becomes a problem. So that kind of fits in there. So about sixteen percent of our maintenance overall is preventative. And our goal, as I've talked with this group about before, is to kind of flip that script, see that number increase, get us much more into the preventative maintenance business and less so in the break fix business. But we are still there, working toward the right direction. Then about seven and a half percent grounds, and then another miscellaneous six and a half percent. So miscellaneous is things like, I need a picture put up in an office, or I need a desk built, something of that effect. Now, I also want to qualify this and say some of these things can be, for example, grounds, I'll use that as a perfect example. The task might be remove all the leaves from Civic Center. That's a forty-five acre complex. So that might take a week, two weeks, something like that, for that one work order to be completed. Whereas another one may be fix an outlet, you know, something like that. It may take just a moment. So there's varying degrees of difficulty and complexity with each of these work orders. But that at least gives us a basic idea of what categories those things are falling into. Now, I'd mentioned a couple of different types of maintenance, so I just wanted to touch on these. Preventative maintenance, of course, is the best kind of maintenance that we can do. This is getting stuff done before it becomes a problem. Reactive maintenance is the mode that we are in for the most part. We're in flipping that script, trying to move us towards that more reactive maintenance. And we've got some tools coming that we've talked about before and I'll talk about in a minute that will help us with that. And then the last one is the deferred maintenance. So the deferred maintenance is the stuff that we have not been able to do yet for one reason or another. And in terms of deferred maintenance, I want to talk a little bit about that because I know that's been a topic of quite a bit of discussion. I could give you a number for deferred maintenance, but I will tell you that I'd throw a number at you and it would be fiction. So if I just said it's this amount of dollars for our deferred maintenance. But there's really a process that we need to go through to best understand what that maintenance is. And first, in any multi-step process, recognition is the first step, recognition that we've got a problem with our maintenance. We've recognized that. We're putting things in place. You've authorized us to add OpenGov. And OpenGov is going to revolutionize the way that we do this kind of management, the way that we do our work orders, the way that we maintain our assets, the way that we understand our assets, which is that second piece, which is gathering information. We're going through that process as we ramp up with OpenGov now, and we're gonna go live with that for our first use of it in the second week of December. And then we'll ramp that up through the end of January, at which point we'll completely cut from our existing work order system. So we've got that six-week dual system that'll give us that opportunity to really bring that together. But what OpenGov is gonna help us do is it better understand our asset locations, better understand the problems with those assets, what we need in order to manage those assets. And then each time we create a task and complete that task, that task will be tagged to a specific asset. And we can also code specific resources. I use this piece of equipment. We had this much labor, this much in labor hours. And then for some of our things, I use this material, might be field dry material, for example, or something like that. Paint, field paint, that's another example. This is the true cost of what it costs to maintain these things. Then by gathering that full record, we can then get a better understanding of what that looks like and then figure out our prioritization. Is the issue that we're dealing with a safety issue? Is it a regulatory issue? Is it a satisfaction issue with the building or the environment that you're in? And there's certainly different tiers within that. Of course, your safety is going to be first, right? Your regulatory things, we need to make sure we take care of those. But we also need to make sure that we're creating good spaces for people to work, for people to play, and for people to come and transact business with us. We also need to look at the assessed condition. There's some things that we may be able to initially say that the lifespan for this rooftop unit is twenty years. But by having empirical data in a system that shows us what we've done with that system over time, we might be able to say that this system has a technical life of twenty years, but we're doing a lot of maintenance on this. We may need to shorten that so we can reduce our costs. And then same thing on the opposite side. We may have something that has a twenty-year lifespan, but we've maintained it very well. We may be able to extend its life for a few years, but you're also playing that little bit of a game. But by having that empirical data, we can better understand that and make sure that we're extending the life of the assets that we should be extending and that we're replacing the assets that we need to be replacing. Alternate cost is another one. Sometimes we would need to look at that and say, what's the cost of, you know, can a five hundred dollar part, can replacing this five hundred dollar part, can that help us avoid a fifty thousand dollar replacement? So we need to think, what are those alternate actions that we can take? And then sometimes it comes down to, what's the cost of inaction? Is there a consequence of inaction? If we do nothing with this, what would happen? And sometimes that may be a case. So we take all that information together, and then we end up making intentional investment, and that is where our capital improvement plan comes in. So for two thousand twenty-five, capital improvement, we had thirty-eight projects that were approved for two thousand twenty-five. And it was a total of two point nine one four million in that budget. We completed eighteen of those projects to date. And you may be looking at that thinking, well, there's thirty-eight there, there's eighteen, there's twenty that aren't completed. I would have to say that, yeah, there's a number in there, but I am really impressed with the number of projects that our team was able to accomplish this year. We tackled projects. We're still tackling some projects. While we didn't get them all completed, we went in with the big hairy audacious goal at the beginning of two thousand twenty-five, and we still have that goal. We're just gonna move some of those things around a little bit. So on those eighteen projects, there was one million one hundred and sixty-three thousand one hundred that was invested, or budgeted, excuse me. And then we've actually completed those projects at one point zero one four million, so we were a hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars under budget on those completed projects for the year. So pleased with how that has gone. A little summary of some of those projects? Yes?
Clarify on that last slide.
Sure.
So the one point one that was budgeted, that was for the eighteen projects?
That was for the eighteen, correct.
Okay, thank you.
So if I take the budgeted amount for those eighteen projects, that's one point one six three.
I wanted to clarify that because that's important for people listening.
Sure, thank you. So projects for two thousand twenty-five, what you're looking at in the picture here, some of these are not very exciting, right? These are water heaters in the jail. Absolutely thrilling to look at water heaters in jail. But this is one of those things that's both a safety issue and a regulatory issue. We need to make sure that we're providing hot and cold water for folks that are in the jail. And so we replaced those. They did an excellent job. Again, shout out to Hurst and to our facilities team for making that one happen. We replaced building management systems in the Hall of Justice and the Law Enforcement Center, as well as putting in something in called a Niagara server, which basically what all those systems do is that they allow all that information to communicate with the Niagara server and then allows our HVAC tech to be able to see that information, see what's happening in each of those buildings that are connected to that system remotely. So Ben might be at the Historic Courthouse, and somebody might call and say, hey, there's a problem with something going on at the Hall of Justice. He can call that up on his phone, see what's happening with dampers, see what's happening with the intake air, see what's happening with the outflow, everything. And it really makes everything much more efficient. So that's what the building management systems can help us do, is increase that efficiency. Fire panel replacements, we replaced a fire panel in this building, and then we also replaced a fire panel at the Hall of Justice. We had originally planned to replace a fire panel at the jail. Chris Como, our deputy director of facilities, he put on his fire inspection hat, and he was able to do some things and take a look at that and say, I think if we just make some modifications, this, we don't need to replace this one. And he was able to make those fixes. The errors have gone away. It is still a functioning panel. So pleased to say that, you know, some of those cases, we can take a look at it from an alternate point of view and figure out how can we continue to keep this going in a safe manner. And that's what we've been able to do. Valves and fixtures, so again, not very exciting with that one. I don't have any pictures of that. But the valves and fixtures throughout the properties, we're continuing to replace those, as well as a number of valves and fixtures in the jail. So kitchen fixtures and then valves throughout each of the flush valves and that, and each of the cell block areas. We're replacing those throughout the year as the opportunities come up on those. Replaced tile and grout in the kitchen, did some access control upgrades in a few of our buildings as well, so folks can use their proximity cards and be able to get into the buildings. Resurfaced our amphitheater, and then also put in a new dehumidification system. So that's the picture that we have up on the screen here at Howe Arena, so we create a better ice surface for that space. And then also replaced the irrigation system at Civic Center. That job is, I'm gonna call it mostly complete. They've put everything in the ground. They just need to just finish tying up a couple of things, and we'll tie those up in the spring when we charge the system up and get it ready to go. Couple of other things that are also included in that, so Power Island signage. This is one of those things that we get really nerdy about. So I'd heard the comment earlier when we were talking, when the Conservation District was here and they were talking about the wayfinding signage. Having signage at Power Island makes a world of difference at the space. And not only have we updated the signs at Power Island, actually, I shouldn't say updated, we put signs. There were very few signs at Power Island. There was one that I always thought was funny that I remember walking on a trail one time, and I saw a little stick, and it just said, and it had kind of wood burned into it three fifths of a mile, and I thought, hmm, that's- And I thought, hmm, that's interesting. How often do you measure in fifths of a mile? And so I saw that, and I continued down the trail, and it was a straight trail. Didn't loop back, didn't have any split offs and everything. Walked down the trail seemingly forever. I get to another pipe, or I get to another post, what do you think it said? Three-fifths of a mile. I'm like, wait a minute, the math is not working out here. So now we've got directionals, we've got all the wayfinding signage, we've got maps on those, so you can see where you are. And then we've got the map online, so folks can be able to access that as well. So Power Island signage was a big one. We also added signage to Civic Center Park. And I think that has turned out fantastic, and we continue to do that into 2026. Other Civic Center projects, this one's not a capital improvement, but I had to slip it in because it was a huge project this year for us, and I wanted to make sure we did at least mention that one. The walking track replacement at Civic Center. So that was our Spark Grant project. During the meeting here, I actually received the final bills for that, and we've closed that project out. And we closed that out at $6,190 under its budget. So excited for that one. But that was the walking track replacement. We paved the amphitheater parking lot. Another one that we kind of get a little nerdy about, I love the track, I love the bridge, I love the fitness stations, but strangely enough, one of the things that got me most excited about it was having that parking lot paved and making that southwest corner of the park a usable space. You can now more effectively use the amphitheater, use the pavilion, have more parking space. People left to their own devices with a dirt lot will park in any which way, in any directions. And it's just, it's brought so much more order to the space and brought much usefulness to the space. And there's connecting pathways from that area that take you directly to the walking track. So exciting with that. And then, like I mentioned, the approved signage, I put that one on the bottom here as well. A few other projects for 2025, Natural Education Reserve. So we removed the Saban North overlook. And that is one of the overlooks, one of the three overlooks and one bridge that is part of our overall capital improvement process for that particular property. One of the things that I've learned in the year-plus in this particular role from a facility standpoint, many, many things, first of all, but one is just how long engineering takes. And that's not a knock on engineers, it's just the engineering takes a long time for this stuff. So we've been working throughout the year with Spicer Group. They've been great on doing engineering for each of those overlooks. And so we need to go through a full engineering process there in order to be able to give the people who are going to do the work something to be able to work from. So, but in the meantime, we were able to remove and replace the Saban North overlook, and it looks fantastic. So if you've not been out to the Nature Center, or if you do happen to go out this Friday at 8:30 to go see that bridge set, we'll make sure we show you that new overlook. And then we're in the final stages of that overlook engineering. The picture that you see here is actually not related, but I did want to include that one. This is the rain garden that Sarah made reference to in the Grand Traverse Conservation District's report. And this was a great project. So this was a cooperative project between the county, the Botanic Gardens, Greenspire School, and Grand Traverse Conservation District. And we got together, Matthew from the Botanic Gardens came out, and he worked with the students and taught them about rain gardens and bioswales, and what the differences were with those rain gardens and bioswales. And then they talked about, and they observed different areas on property. The students selected that as a location that they really thought could be a perfect location for them. The students then went and worked with Matthew and worked with the Conservation District to put together plans. And the students then voted on those and refined those. They did a kind of a public art fair, not art fair, but science fair kind of thing at their school. We had an opportunity to attend that. They refined it all, and then they brought their chosen design to our Parks Commission, for our Parks Commission to receive it, accept it, vote on it, and then it went forward from there. So big props to all the organizations that were involved in getting that in place. And it's a really nice addition to the park property. Some projects that are in process right now, so they're still in motion. Governmental Center chiller, so the chiller in the basement of this building. That basement is cleaned out, they've taken all the equipment out that was there. And if you, I know many of you, not all of you have been down there before. When you, if you're down there now, it's a totally different world. So we're still working on that. Also working through the Governmental Center first-floor remodel. So we're having regular meetings with the three elected officials' offices to make sure that we can make a smooth transition, figure out when we're moving, how we're moving, where we're putting everybody, and making sure that we've got IT connectivity for everybody, and then making sure that we've got a good communication plan for not only the people that are in the building, but more importantly, for customers when they're coming to transact business, so they know all the different places to go. Also bidding out rooftop units for the Law Enforcement Center, and then continuing some engineering. I'd mentioned how long that takes. We actually just finished the engineering for the historic courthouse steps and the concrete just a couple of days ago. So we'll be taking that to bid with the work happening in 2026. And then the NER overlooks nearing completion on that one. Couple of other projects that we expect to be completed in 2025. Handicap openers for Civic Center was one of the projects that we had on the plan. And then jail kitchen fixtures. So we've been replacing those piece by piece, and we should be done with those pretty soon here. There were some projects that we opted to either cancel or postpone indefinitely, and so just want to talk about those real quick. The two projects for the jails, the jail booking remodel. So that would be remodeling, just as it sounds, remodeling the booking area. So when folks come in, and so that was a $250,000 allocation. We also opted to postpone or eliminate the jail camera replacement, knowing that what we've got going on with the jail. Choice was, doesn't make a lot of sense to remodel the booking area, and we're going to take that building down. And then Public Services Building window replacement, as well as sidewalk replacement. So the sidewalk specifically, it is exposed aggregate. We've been able to patch that and maintain that in good condition, and we'll keep on top of that one. And then the windows, that's another one that we need to look at. We had originally allocated $100,000 for the windows. This is one where our math was a little off on this one. So $100,000 bids came back, $500,000, so just a little bit outside on that one. And then, so that's a question that we have to ask is, with that building, what's the long-term fate of that building? So we need to figure that piece out before we decide, are we going to replace all the windows on that building? So with that in mind, let's talk 2026 capital. So we've got a number of projects that we'd like to move forward from 2025 into 2026. So this funding's already been allocated, it's already in the capital fund. So those are listed here, so the jail and historic courthouse concrete, so the steps and the walkways in between those two buildings. And it is crumbling, there's some trip hazards, so that's a safety issue that we want to make sure that we're taking care of. And then you'll see the picture here of the cracked concrete in front of the steps. And then if I was able to zoom in, you can see some spalling concrete and a lot of problems with the steps that lead up to that exit. And so while that exit is just an emergency exit, it's not used as a regular entry. It is still an emergency exit. We still do need to make sure that we're maintaining that appropriately. Vasa driveway, so that one, along with another one in the future here on our next page, we'll talk a little bit about that. That is one that we opted to push into 2026, and I'll talk about why here in just a moment. Actually, do I have that in here? No, I don't. Historic courthouse exterior refurbishing. So this is one that was actually on the 2024 list, it was on 2025. We now have a provider, so you voted on that at a meeting a month ago or so. So Northern Restoration Waterproofing, they are going to be doing that work for us. So they're going to be tuck pointing the building, they're going to be taking out some of the brick, replacing some of that. We got some brick around the steps, they'll take that out. They're going to do all the above-grade and below-grade work, and they're doing that for $39,100 less than was originally budgeted, which was $280,000. And so our total package on that is $241.9 for that one. So that'll happen in the spring of 2026. Wayfinding signage, as Sarah had mentioned, we're continuing to spec all that stuff out. We have much of it specked out. The Natural Education Reserve is the piece that wasn't included in our original project, so we're blending all that together. And then we're real close to being able to go to bid on that one, and then put that signage together and get that out in the spring of 2026. Overlook replacements, talked about that one earlier. And then Medali Roof, Medali Restrooms, and Medali Asphalt. You had also voted on Medali Asphalt just two, three weeks ago, something along those lines. We're too late in the year to be able to get that done in 2025, so we'll push that into 2026. Doors for the historic courthouse will be moved, as well as skate park repairs, and then some parking lot seal and stripe work. So we'd like to move that forward. And again, that $1,284,700 is already in our capital improvement budget. We're just moving those projects forward to the current, to the next year. For 2026, we've got a number of new things that are on the list here. First, MEDC wrap grant match. So there was a Michigan Economic Development Corporation Revitalization and Placemaking Grant that was awarded for roughly $992,000 and change earlier this year. That particular grant actually covers a few different things, so I'll transition. We'll talk to that in just a moment here. So that covers renovation and expansion of the south building. So that south building is what you see in the picture here. And just to give you a reminder, so when the central operations building becomes complete on La Frainer, our facilities team would move out of the facility shop. And when they move out of the facility shop, we still need to make sure we have a space on property to maintain the fields and maintain the grounds. So we'd be adding a two-plus-bay garage onto the back of that, and then reconfiguring this building into additional restrooms. So these restrooms have not been our most shining moment, we know that. They need to be replaced. And so our plan is either three or four restrooms, so smaller restrooms, a couple of those being family restrooms, would be the order of the day. So we've got three bids in on those, we're taking a look at that right now. And we'll move forward on that once we've got everything finalized. So that's the first piece, renovating and expanding that south building. Identification signage is just another one. So if you're driving down Front Street, or Munson, or whatever it's called right there, you don't necessarily know that it's a park. There's nothing out there to identify that it's a park. So that is part of that project, is identification signage, both at the north end, as well as the south end. And then installation of a pump track at the northwest corner of the park. I made a little note that Nortay is actually paying for that particular piece. So we're working with that on them. So with this one, the $992,000 grant does carry a $992,000 match. That has been met in part, so Nortay's taking care of roughly a third of that to cover the pump track. The, we received a $375 grant from the Brownfield Fund. And so that will cover that portion, and then the remaining portion will be $388, which is actually less than the bids that we're getting to renovate that building alone, considerably less. So I'd call that a pretty good deal for us in the long run. Historic, sorry, Hall of Justice roof restoration. So the roof restoration basically involves not replacing the roof, not replacing the membrane that's on the roof, but doing what's called a fluid-applied replacement. So it's essentially pouring a fluid application onto that roof surface and resealing that roof. And it comes with a 20-year warranty at a significantly lower cost. So it is a recognized method to extend the life of roofs. And so that's what we're looking to do with that one, at $320,000. The historic courthouse AC fan and controls replacement. So right now, I talked about building management systems earlier. We don't have a building management system that supports the historic corridor, so this would give us the ability to have better controls there. And the fan and the AC system, they are end of life. And so instead of replacing with one giant fan, which is what it's in there now, we'll replace that with a fan array. And the benefit of a fan array is that instead of one giant fan that you have to figure out how to get that fan out of the building, which can be quite cumbersome. If one piece goes down, one fan in a fan array goes down, we can pull that one fan out easily, replace it, and it doesn't shut the whole system down. And then Vasa Improvement and Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund Grant Match. So this $175,000 matches with the 125 that I'd mentioned. I'm going to step back for just a second here. The Vasa driveway, this is the second item that you see on that list. That was in the 2025 plan. And then earlier this year in March, this board was asked, and you supported a measure to move that money, as well as allocate $175,000 for a $300,000 match against a $400,000 grant. We are 21 days away from finding out if we get that grant. We have received our final scoring for that grant from the Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund. 355 is our final scoring, I feel really good about that. And I'm optimistic on where we end up with that particular one. But if we get that grant, then we would be asking to spend that 175 on supporting this park, as well as the previous 125. TART is kicking in the other $100,000 match for that one. So we would basically completely rebuild the Vasa Trailhead and make that the destination that it is, the destination that it needs to be. Hall of Justice paint, Hall of Justice carpets, so two items that are on there, as well as jail lobby flooring and the Law Enforcement Center carpet. So that carpet, in one of the areas of the Law Enforcement Center, is used for briefing, is used for press events. And that's not the most shining moment for that building as well. So we want to make sure when people come into that building, they're seeing something appropriate. I neglected to move forward to this one here, just wanted to point that out real quick. This is just what's being done with the Vasa Trailhead Improvement Project. So improving the stormwater management. If you've been there, you've recognized that water comes down the mostly gravel, but technically asphalt driveway, hits the dirt material, or the gravel material, and then all of that material runs north and then ends up at the north end of the park. So we'll improve the stormwater management in that park, open some of the basins, and improve the entrance drive in the parking lot, and then improve utilization of the warming hut. Make that a usable space, so people can actually go there, put their skis on, use the space. Trail connectivity will move from the north end of the park, and you'll be able to go right from the warming hut directly out onto the Vasa Trail. So big improvements, we're excited about that one coming forward. So with that, we've got $1,284,700 in the 2025 carryover. Our new projects would come to 1.221 million, for a total of $2,505,700 for capital improvement for the year. So now you're probably asking the question, hey, how are we going to pay for this stuff? So through some creative work and working with Mr. Bott and working with our administrative team, we've come together and said, how are we going to be able to pay for this? So our new request, and we don't have to deal with the $1,284, that's already in the fund, we're just moving that forward. But the new amount, the $1,221, we've got $750,000 from canceled projects. That money remains in the fund, so we can take that off the $1,221. There's $390,437 that was in the fund, unallocated from 2024, so we take that off. We'll receive reimbursements from the city for the chiller. We take that off, which means our net new capital request is zero for those additional items.
Better do the wave.
I know.
Oh, we could do better than that.
That's our budget.
Any questions, comments, or concerns for Director Chase, Commissioner Walter?
Thank you, yeah, that was some magic math there. So I feel like we should applaud that, so thank you.
Well, thank you to the team here.
Thanks, everybody. A couple things, I know you're, and I am happy with the stuff that you all accomplished this year. It is a lot, and a lot of people are enjoying it. I am concerned about the percentage and the number that didn't get done. Only looking ahead, like, are our eyes bigger than our stomach? Are, do we not have the resources available? Like, that feels like a lot, and also things keep getting more expensive. So I can't imagine all of those are the same budget number they were when they got bid out 18 months ago, and...
Well, they weren't all bid out. So those are estimates. So in some cases, we need engineering in order to bid that item out. So for example, the historic courthouse steps, that's a perfect example there. Until we have engineering, we don't have something to be able to go to. And that's, again, that's one of those learning pieces for me this year, is that like the historic courthouse steps, my initial thought was, well, we're just putting in new concrete. But then afterwards, it's like, wait a minute, we do need to engineer this first. We can't just have them pour new concrete. So that's on me, in some of those cases, not realizing that we needed to go that step.
Yeah, so some of it's just learning.
Yeah.
Yeah. So some of it's just learning. But are we learning enough? It feels like we're pushing all of these ahead and then adding a lot of other stuff. Are we going to be in the same spot next year where we pushed a bunch of stuff ahead because we couldn't get to it?
So some of the things that we're pushing ahead, we've already either bid out, or we're mostly done with the engineering. So I feel better about those now than if you'd asked me a couple months ago. The new stuff, we aren't adding as much new stuff because we recognize that 38 was a lot. All right. We did bite off a lot with that. And yeah, we weren't able to complete all 38. I'm feeling better about where we stand at this point.
Okay, good. And just one quick note. I didn't realize until a couple years ago that the Vasa Trailhead was a county park.
Yes.
And so I feel like all of this is a great way of showing one of our county assets and taking better care of it. And also just the great partnership we have with TART and a whole bunch of other connected organizations and passionate community members who volunteer a lot of hours to maintain that. So thanks for being a part of this project. And I think a lot of people now are understanding that, that we didn't really know before. So, and it's really bad out there. So yay for that, yeah.
That's one of the things that I recog-- thank you for that. One of the things that I recognized early on when I started here in April of 2022 is that for our parks, we have an identity problem. And so Vasa is a great example of that. When you pull up to Vasa, the only sign that's out front of Vasa is a brown wood sign that is a state park sign. Because once you get off our property, you're on state property. But there's nothing to identify the county there. We have the Conservation District. The Conservation District calls the nature center home. They support the natural education reserve for us. But there's a lot of folks that, oh, that's the Conservation District. Well, yes, that's the Conservation District's home, but that's a county park. So elevating that these things happen because of your county parks, and all these entities are supporting us. Maple Bay is another good example. There's a white farmhouse next to our property that's owned by the land conservancy. A lot of people, oh, that's the land conservancy. That's the Maple Bay Park. It is our park property. Grant Land Conservancy helps us with that. So the signage, that's one big thing that's going to make a difference, is that when you roll by a sign, when you roll by a park, you'll see consistent branding for each of those parks that makes you say, I know that that's a county-owned property.
Any more comments, questions? Commissioner Andrews?
Yeah, I just have a couple, a few questions. One, I'm interested to hear how the OpenGov rollout goes. But you mentioned that, you know, identifying ways to extend the life, the technical life or the life expectancy of some assets is a way to obviously have cost-effective maintenance budgets. What is the opportunity at facilities to institutionalize inspections?
Okay. So that's something that we can do through our preventative maintenance. And there's actually an inspection facility built into that or a function built into that. So if you say that the activity that I'm going to do is inspect this item, it will give us the ability to create an inspection form that we can document all the steps that we would go through. And we would build that into our preventative maintenance. It's time to inspect the rooftop unit at the Hall of Justice. Here are the eight things that we inspected. We documented that we did those things. Ben signs off that he's the one that completed those, so we can have an understanding of that. And the system will help us build what's called an overall condition index. So that overall condition index basically is a rating from 0 to 100, and what is the condition, with 100 being an excellent condition, 0 being in poor condition. And it uses all of the data that's in the system to help come up with that.
And then relatedly, is the inspection cycle automated, or is that imposed from the outside, right? Like rooftops, if you do it on a regular basis, you might identify issues early that extend the life of it. And does the system itself identify a cadence that is best practice?
So the system doesn't identify a specific cadence, but manufacturers will often identify a specific cadence. So they'll say that we recommend preventative maintenance on this item quarterly, monthly, whatever that may be. Then we'll also look at industry best practices if those aren't already documented by a manufacturer.
Okay, thank you. Just making sure that inspections are built in. Another question relates to a rollover item from, I believe it was originally '24, and it went into '25. And now it's on the, I don't see it at all, which is, it was part of the jail rebooking, but it was also a isolation cells?
So the jail booking remodel, that is the combination of that. So it was booking and isolation cells.
And do we not think we still need isolation cells at the jail, at least on, I mean, it's going to be at least another two to three years. And obviously, my understanding is that the need for those cells is ever-present.
So the isolation, there are isolation cells in the jail now. They would like to see more isolation cells, but you can't necessarily do half that project. It's a considerable project. So I guess I'd have to ask this board. I mean, if that's something that you want to continue, then that's something that we need to look at.
Well, I guess, and that, I would be interested to know from the sheriff. I believe he was emphatic a year ago when we were doing the capital improvement planning budget, that even if we and when we or how we rebuild, you know, create a new jail system structure, there are things that we need in the meanwhile. And I understood that that was a priority for the sheriff. I don't know if that's the case. And maybe the question is, has he signed off on the cancellation of that project, and in particular, the isolation cells?
We've had conversations with both the sheriff as well as Captain Argyle.
Okay. I just don't want surprises on us when that's not in the budget for next year. It's just being canceled across the board.
So it's a great question, both from Commissioner Walter and from Commissioner Andrews, is we went specifically line by line with our CIP budget. We used to just approve the CIP budget at large. This, most recent practices, we're approving projects. So for us administratively to say, you know, we don't, this doesn't make sense to us, because we're going to tear, hopefully, hopefully, tear the building down in the next foreseeable future. Do we want to spend that amount of money on that project? We had the same discussion with the chiller. $482,000 worth of chiller that is now going into our basement in a building that could conceivably change its course in the foreseeable future. How would you like us to handle that? Would you like us to bring it in a format like as an agenda item? Because you've already approved the project.
So as we move forward, there's, it's not an apples-to-apples debate, though. This board's already approved that we're going to build a new jail facility. So, and so in Commissioner Andrews' point, we're talking two to three, maybe four years out, probably, hopefully not. When it comes to this building, the chiller project, we haven't even decided what we're doing yet. And I'm going to guess there's going to be an efficiency audit between then and now. So a chiller was one of those things. It's like, hey, you got to have heat. You got to have air conditioning. You need it today. We have isolation cells. They've been making it work. I'd be willing to bet the sheriff and Captain Argyle are more excited about a new justice facility than they are. But instead of directing that towards Mr. Elger and Director Chase, let's just ask Sheriff Shay when he gets an opportunity to direct that. If, I believe in my heart that if they weren't okay with it, we would see Captain Argyle or Sheriff Shay sitting in the audience right now talking about it. But to be fair to the public and to them, let's ask them. But other than that, personally, if there's any other comments, I think it's great. Good job. Good job.
Well, and I just want to answer the administrator's question, which I think is, do, if we cancel a project, is that an item that requires affirmative action, or is it more of a passive thing? And my perspective on that is if we decide to cancel a project, that is an amendment to the CIP, and the board should approve it. It is a, right, it's our priorities have shifted, but it's as much, a decision to not do a project is as much as a decision to do the project in the first place. So I think that should be a board perspective.
I think so, too. I agree. And I think there's probably going to be more of these as we are deep in facilities for next, at least five years or more to come. So there will be more of these. And I think the earlier this conversation with staff comes to us to say, hey, this is what we're thinking. You know, we're, you know, we're really close. We're going to have this new facility in three years, five years. Like, let's just have that discussion when it starts to come up, and then make the formal request to either cancel it or move ahead. So we're all on the same page. We know, like, this is what's happening.
Thank you. I think that's the right way to go. And I would contemplate, as we speak about the CIP budget at the next board meeting, Director Chase would highlight those items that are not being done and for your direct approval to cancel the project or to continue it.
That makes sense.
Thank you.
I have just a couple more questions. One is on this slide, actually, coincidentally, on the Public Services Building window replacement. While I understand that facilities has some, I'll use Commissioner Walter's prior comment, sort of a felt board of movement going on. But I'm not sure that Public Services Building is necessarily on any active teardown list, to my knowledge. I'm not sure. But I guess the main question I have is, it seems like window replacement is a significant opportunity for potential grants funding, if it's, there are some efficiency benefits associated with it, depending on the type of windows and other issues. So I'm just wondering if that is an opportunity for us to see some benefits.
So we're finding grants of that type becoming fewer and fewer. It's the reality of it at the moment.
All right, then my--
There was a committee--
Can I just have a quick follow-up on the windows? So I know this is canceled or postponed indefinitely, but, and that number was way larger, as you shared. But aren't there some just broken windows?
We've replaced those.
Okay, thank you. Because I was like, there's some maybe that are old, like my house, I need new windows, right? But they're not broken.
Right. We'll continue to do that kind of work, of course. And we've done--
Because I've heard that from people. They were broken for a long time. And those are taken care of?
Yep.
Okay.
My last question for you is, I understand that one of the biggest projects the Facilities Department undertook this year was the jail investigation related to the incident that happened in the booking. I think that was Manchin?
Yes, Manchin.
How does that fit in? Was that, did we squeeze that money out of the CIP budget? And, I mean, that was a significant investment, right?
We squeezed that, for the most part, out of our building repair budget.
Okay. So that doesn't impact CIP?
No.
Okay. Those are my questions.
Did create a bit of a strain on the building repair. It's something that needed to be done.
All right. Any more comments, questions, concerns for Director Chase, Administrator Elger? Thank you very much for presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Great job. Great job. All right. Mr. Elger, that's your show.
Yeah. So part and parcel to this discussion is the CIP. We have been working through options for how do we maintain the least amount of debt borrowing for Project Alpha as we can. We presented some information previously about some concepts. I'd like to re-present them with some, and receive some direction from the board on some of our concepts. First and foremost is, there are four options that I've listed here for, you know, how can we manage this? And really, there are five. The first option truly could be, we bond the full amount. And that, that is an option. So option one is enumerated here. Through the 2026 budget process, we identified $3 million for the purpose of a down payment, if you would call it a down payment, to limit the amount that we borrowed for Project Alpha. We were successful in doing that, thanks to Dean and his staff and every department head and elected official that submitted their budget. They knew this was a goal. We've reached that goal. So at a minimum, if we applied $3 million in general funds in 2026, we would estimate $5.1 million in interest savings over the course of 30 years. Option two, we believe that we have the ability to apply $6.5 million in county funding, and that would be the $3 million general fund appropriation, $2 million from tax delinquent revolving fund, and the $1.5 million that we are receiving from the sale of PACE. That would save us an estimated of $11.1 million in interest earnings over 30 years. Option three, we believe we have the ability to put down $9.2 million in county funding. And that would include what we just talked about, as well as $2.8 million by suspending the fund balance policy for 2025. That policy, as you know, requires any proceeds that return from the preceding year. 50% goes into the CIP fund, and 50% goes into the pension stabilization fund. If we did that, that would save approximately $16 million in interest over the course of 30 years. Option four, we believe that we have the ability to provide $12 million in county funding. That includes everything we just spoke about, and that is completely suspending the fund balance policy and using the entire $5.5 million from the surplus funds from 2024. And that would save approximately $20.1 million over the course of 30 years. So that is, that's a pretty, there's a lot of information there. Would you like to have some discussion about debt service options first before we proceed?
Any questions for Administrator Elger?
I also want to highlight the fact that the, what you, the discussion you just had includes, Mr. Chase, Dean and I, Chris have worked on, we now know that there's a zero ask for the CIP funding in 2026. So that 50% would already not be in play.
Can you please remind us, at least me, how the tax delinquent revolving fund works and how this would impact it?
Sure. Dean's more apt to do this, but from a Nate's perspective, taxes are due to the municipality that you reside in at a certain date. Once that date has passed, the county has agreed with the local municipalities to purchase that burden. And then we collect the taxes for them. And when the taxes are paid back, we get an amount above the penalty, if you will, for the late payment. We keep that in a fund. That fund is continuously rotating, and there is a tax burden that goes out. We have to pay the townships and the locals for that debt. We ultimately get the money back. So we do have to carry an amount there that's sufficient to cover any late taxes for the local units. And I just don't think that we need to carry as much as we do. Mr. Bott has done a thorough analysis of this. He's very, I'd say he's comfortable with $2 million from that fund, and that we would have sufficient funds within that fund to cover debt.
How much would be left in there to cover it, then?
Well, the cash in the fund goes up and down depending on the time of year. The delinquent taxes are generally purchased in April, and that amount can be anywhere from $6 to $7 million. So when I looked at cash flow, you wouldn't want to take the cash, obviously, next April. But there is currently sufficient cash in the fund to make a, or to basically use up to $2 million. And you'd have the cash that you need to still purchase the delinquent taxes. We do receive a share of the earnings on an annual basis. It's revenue that's budgeted. It's a transfer from the delinquent tax revolving fund back to the general fund. That would be impacted directly. If we're pulling funds out directly, we wouldn't be able to pull necessarily a share of the earnings also. So that is one consequence of pulling the $2 million.
Is that a statutory requirement, or is that just something nice that we do for--
There's no statutory requirement. As Administrator Elger said, the delinquent tax revolving fund is used primarily to make all of the taxing authorities, the townships, the villages, and the city all, so that they have their tax revenue to work with to fund their budgets. And it's been very well managed over the years. There, you have the option to borrow to purchase delinquent taxes, and we have not had to do that because of the cash in the fund balance that's been built up in the fund. We have used funds from the delinquent tax fund in the past for some major capital expenditures, or sometimes to help with some road improvements. But you generally want to make sure that it does not affect the county treasurer's ability to purchase the delinquents, delinquent taxes in April.
Okay. But if we, for some odd reason, you know, the market tanks, people can't pay their taxes, and we don't have enough money in there, it's not really on us to fill that fund. But we do that to help out our community, to make it whole.
Yeah, consistently, you know, you've had major, not only local, economic, or macro, larger, people generally tend to pay their taxes. There's some consistency in the amount of taxes that are not paid by the, you know, the end of February. It's pretty easy to look at that ebb and flow. And I don't have that concern, that we'd have a major change or something that we have not experienced in the time that we've had our delinquent tax revolving funds, so.
There is the ultimate penalty of the home, the property could be foreclosed upon in the event the taxes are paid. So there is motivation for those taxes to be paid. And, you know, if we have $10 million in that fund, and there's, you know, a $6 million purchase of others, of their debt, so to speak, or their burden, we still have, we're going to recoup those funds, for the most part. We're comfortable that $2 million is definitely available to us for this purpose.
Daryl, Commissioner Nelson, excuse me.
Either one. I know which one you're talking about. Do, does the administration have a recommendation between the options, or a direction they want to lean?
I just, I guess I'd like to note that option four aligns with the forecast that we asked Mr. Burke and Mr. Swets to put together for the Board of Commissioners that you saw previously and is attached to this agenda item. It is up to you. I think that in my world, saving up to $20 million in interest over the course of 30 years is a wise thing. And this is within our financial capability currently. I don't have any concerns about the proposal, number four, about us overreaching in any way, shape, or form. So if you're asking, that would be my recommendation.
It would be--
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Well, it would be interesting to get an update on the pension stabilization fund to fully see the picture, because I know, it felt like the last time it was, you know, had been recovering and was doing well, and the forecasts looked good. But we haven't gotten an update for a while to fully understand if redirecting the 50% transfer just for this year, it sounds like, is prudent or not. So that would be good information to have before I decide that I wanted to do that or not.
Yeah, absolutely. I think that's completely fair. Internally, we, Mr. Forsythe has software that he uses that forecasts what our payments are going to be between now and 2034. Depending on the market, it balloons and it decreases, and we are in a very favorable position, because we had a favorable year in '24, and we're having a favorable year in '25. So, you know, we are, and we also have something called surplus funds within MERS. Those dollars are available to us to apply directly to lower that payment in the future. And Mr. Forsythe can do a presentation at the next board meeting, or at a study session to show you exactly where we are and why we're comfortable.
That'd be great.
Yep.
I'd like that.
Commissioner Andrews?
Yeah, so just so I understand on the option three, since the concept at this point is that our 2026 CIP is pre-funded, in a sense, with 2025 rollover and other magical things? In a sense, right, like option three, that 2.7 million is, if we don't go with option three, then we have 2.7 million sitting there, because we're not gonna, we don't need that for the CIP. So it seems to me, at least that 50%, we already know we can do that, and it's probably a good, if we don't use it for this, we're either giving it back to the taxpayers, or we're putting it into some other capital project.
Correct.
But we don't need it for the CIP.
The reason for option three is, I'm aware, there are commissioners, we've had conversation about the absolute need for preventive maintenance and the absolute need for continued capital improvement. So Commissioner Walters' point earlier about, did we bite off more than we can chew? We just, we didn't know. Now we know. So, we're very comfortable with recommending option four, but understanding that there is an interest to maintaining our buildings. So in the event that you chose option three, we would just roll that back into the capital improvements fund and maintain it.
So then I have another question, which is, I was under perhaps the misunderstanding that 911 and potentially also the Commission on Aging had fund balances that were available to support a down payment for these, for these two projects. And I don't see that reflected in, in the options. Is there, especially 911, I understood they were collecting that surcharge for years, knowing that that was going to go to a new facility. So I guess that's one question. Is there, are there funds available? And I know Commission on Aging has sort of a mixed feeling on their capital, whether they want to use it.
Well, we have kind of been told that it would be a monthly payment, once it was, you know, under construction, and that would be kind of, that's how that money would be used. I don't, we never had the discussion about a down payment.
Yeah, well, we, when I presented to the Commission on Aging Advisory Board, it was, we're gonna, we're gonna treat the, your portion of the COB, we're gonna amortize it, so consider it like a debt payment. And the Commission on Aging would make an annual payment. And that was concerns that the Advisory Board, that the director, that we talked through about the need for staffing to meet the demands of a growing senior population, that if we invested all this money upfront, it could hurt their ability to add staff to meet needs in the community.
Well, also, this is just a piece of the Commission on Aging, right? This is just the facilities piece of it, the outdoor services. The Commission on Aging has a whole other, where most people work, and/or a large part of Commission on Aging. And the idea with that is that hopefully down the road, too, will, there'll be a new facility, because we kind of have this temporary situation with the area agency on aging. Hopefully, that's a discussion that's coming up, too, is that in several years, there'll be a new facility for a shared, you know, senior services building. And we need money for that. And we can't use our whole fund balance for this, for one piece of what we do.
Right. Adding to Chris's comments, this 911 surplus, there are surplus funds within the 911 fund. Speaking with Mr. LaCure, they have some challenges upcoming, that he has some concerns about, specific with radios and a new radio system. There's a lot of replacements that are coming onboard, so we did not use the fund balance as part of this analysis purposefully. We stayed away from that, hoping that we can continue to look through what is needed through 911, in terms of their equipment and their needs, and respect the fact that those funds are there for those purposes.
So I guess I'll just, you know, support that, the administration's perspective, that achieving a $20 million savings and interest payments over the course of the bonding seems prudent to me, especially given that we can meet option four with sitting here today, so to speak. We've got the resources available. I'm not sure what the point would be of banking some of that 12 million and then incurring interest to build a building that we are, that's practically got shovels in the ground right now, it seems like.
Depends on how much interest you're gaining versus what your bond rate is.
Right.
We don't know that yet.
Well, but we, we do know that assuming a 4%, you know, it's $4 million over the course of the, of the time between that and the one below it. So, yeah, I, and it also seems to me that reducing the amount that we bond for this project is in our long-term interest, because that gives us more headroom for other, probably more expensive bonding projects that are coming along. So it seems like both those forces sort of lead me to gravitate towards option four at this point, but I'd be interested in others' perspectives.
Well, I concur, and I'm sure probably everybody else does, too, but we want to see the projections for the MERS, for the, for the pension stabilization fund, but I think that, I don't see anybody that's thinking anything crazy, other than what was presented here. Commissioner Nelson?
So I'm scrolling back and forth in the presentation here. We've got at the end, in the appendices, there's, it's called Scenario A, Scenario B, Scenario C, and then there's also the bonding, proposed bond scenario. How do these line up with the numbers above? It looks like Scenario B lines up with, with option four. Am I correct?
They all line up with option four, is my understanding. All of them assume, I believe it was a 13 million, but maybe it was a $12 million down payment, so that the Project Alpha cost is that 17. So if you look at Slide 8, that, that Project Alpha is 17.3 million. That is built in with the assumption that we've got a 12 mil, $13 million down payment. Does that make sense?
No, well, you said slide, what am I looking at? Slide?
I'm sorry, I'm on 8 of 20, or?
8 of, where?
I'm looking at the top numbers, where it says, "Project Assumptions Modeled."
Yeah, see, I'm further, I'm, there's 8, there's 9.
It's like one of the first...
There's 8.
You're close.
There's the MFCI.
Yeah, I got it, I got, okay, page 8 of 20. I'm a...
"Project Assumptions Modeled."
I'm going all the way to the end.
Backup.
I know, but, but there are different, like A, B, and C have, well, actually, C, I think is a, you know, A, B, and C are different. And it looks to me...
Different revenue sources.
I almost have to print this out and compare it. It looks to me like B matches 4 with the funds that are being tapped for 9/11, Commission on Aging, and all that. So, I'm not sure.
It, none of the scenarios impact their timings and how we pay the debt service, as opposed to what the down payment on Project Alpha is. All of them assume Project Alpha costs 17 million in bonding.
I understand that.
So, so the next, the next discussion that we have within this item addresses the Scenario A, B, and C. It is what monies we apply going forward that would impact the, what ultimately, when you look at these scenarios, is the cumulative net balance that you want to look at, which is in the column all the way to the far right. You will see that in some of these scenarios, we are negatively impacted, and some of the scenarios were even, or in a positive situation. So that, it determines, it depends on which funding mechanism we use to pay down the debt service, or pay debt service going forward. How do we pay for them? Like I said a few months ago, I believe we can do it within our existing financial footprint. That shows that we can. We won't have to levy new taxes, as an example, to make Project Alpha. So it's, it's a, that's the next piece of this discussion, is how we think we can pay for it. And we are sensitive to the fact that the Board of Commissioners has taken a position on the cannabis dollars. So, we just wanted to provide to you all the options and let you decide going forward how, what funds we're going to use to pay this.
All right, that clarifies it better for me, thank you.
What do you need from us today?
We don't need, I just want you to, wanted to present this to you. We have not had the opportunity to actually walk through the recommendation. In a, in a future meeting, I would assume Dean and Chris, by the end of the year, will want to make a determination on how we're going to handle the fund balance issue, because we have suspended that fund balance policy currently. But we have time. I just wanted to have you have the information and have time to consider it going forward. And I think at a future meeting, we can take a vote. Or if you want to vote today, you can do that as well.
Well, I think we got a couple of questions.
The pension, we have to talk about the pension.
Yeah, if we can get an update on that at a soon study session. I know you have the information, so.
Yeah, so just looking at next month's calendar, we would have a study session on December 10th? Does that work?
Yes.
But that means we take action on this at, at the last meeting of the year? And are we going to try to take a budget decision before the last meeting of the year? Or are we going to?
So, as an agenda study committee, there was discussion about making the 10th a special meeting? That we could actually take action on a few certain items, that would be up to the chairman. But ultimately, we discussed that.
Probably be a good idea.
Yeah. So, Chris will bring to you an update on the pension modeling on the 10th.
Beautiful. Any more questions, comments, concerns for Administrator Elder and the staff?
Just thanks for the preparation of this, it's...
Yeah, good work. Definitely good work, you guys.
I think, I just, I'll close with the, you know, the risk considerations piece of my, our memo. We've talked about this, the what happens if. The what happens if, is, as long as it's going great, it's great. If it goes south, it goes south. You own that debt. The bet, we're going to pay that debt service no matter what. So if we can't handle it from the revenue side of things, which we think that we can, we're very optimistic about that, and we deal with it on the expenditure side of the budget, so you're going to have to potentially make some cuts in, in the event that we have future challenges with debt service. Sitting here today, the three of us, we don't see it, but anything can happen, and I just wanted you to be aware of that.
I mean...
We don't see it right now, but we always have to look at it, because...
Possible.
Well, it does appear that all of the scenarios, even assuming we bond only 17 million for Project Alpha, all of the scenarios include a period of years where we are anywhere from three to two or three million short.
Yeah, we've got to figure out where that's going to come from.
Scenario B, if you look at the cumulative debt service, I'm sorry, cumulative net balance, and Dean, you're going to want to jump in on this.
Right, I, I get it, that over time, in Scenario B, we eventually earn more in revenues to back pay the shortfall on the graphs. The problem is, obviously, that in those years, we've got a cash flow problem, so to speak, right? Like in, in English. We've got years where we owe more than our revenues provide.
Yeah, there was, I, I think, though, I don't have it in front of me, but the cumulative column is the column that's important, and we would want to make sure that we're, I thought it was the option B.
Yeah.
Or even option A, in the cumulative column, we were okay.
I'm, I'm, I don't disagree that at the end of the day, we will have made up our shortfall, but each Scenario A, B, and C shows the blue line getting ahead of the yellow line. The debt being ahead of revenue, for years. So we're either borrowing, or we're cutting, or we're, you know, we catch up, but there are years that we are asking the next generation of commissioners to tighten their belts, or figure out a plan.
Well, and this is one project, this doesn't even consider the jail and...
No, it does.
Well, this considers all the projects.
It's all three of those projects.
But there's a lot of unknowns.
Yes.
There are.
Correct, that's only these three projects.
We're hoping that this is the, the high end.
Yeah, it's probably not.
It's probably not.
It's just there's others.
Yep.
There is.
Well, if, if you look at option C, if you would use your cannabis dollars for just a few years, the cumulative column shows that you're always positive. So you manage this, and I think that's the point that we were trying to show here. You have the ability to manage this debt, it fits within your current budget. Are there absolute guarantees in the future? No, but you'll manage your annual budget to make sure that the debt service payments are covered. And with option Scenario C, you're well in the black over the life of the financing.
Can you just scroll up to Slide 14 of 20? Right, there.
There's Scenario C, and that's not what...
Right, the, the debt from 2030 till 2037 exceeds revenues on an annual basis.
On an annual basis, but cumulatively, cumulatively from what you've saved in the early years, you're covered.
If you, if you're putting, if you're putting those savings aside...
That would be the plan. You have to do that. You manage this process, and I can tell you, any budget that I would work with the administrator on would set those funds aside. You can't be raiding your debt service fund in the early years with this scenario. You manage this process.
Yep. And that goes back to Commissioner Walters' point on the pension stabilization. It has sort of similar, right? Like it's got an idea where you're front-loading it, knowing that in the later years, you're going to be backloaded, and if we're sort of raiding it to downpay, and I...
We'll have some good information, some good news there. We're seeing very positive returns in the market with MERS, and we still have funds in our pension stabilization fund that we can use if we're short.
That will all be to you on the 10th.
Thank you. All right, if there's nothing else, we'll go to unfinished business, if you're all set.
No, that's, we have a budget discussion.
Budget discussion?
Oh, sorry, 9D, I thought we just did that. It certainly felt like it.
So there are a couple of concepts that are out there, that we haven't quite put a pin in yet, that, we have a $56 million revenue budget, it's assigned, we've got $3 million for debt service already included in that, so there, we're in a good, good space. But there are some concepts that we have talked about collectively over the year that we just haven't put a pin in. And, you know, one of them is the, Dean and I firmly want to bring our budget in line with our staffing plan. We are, we are largely compliant with that. There is one position truly that is within the Detective Bureau, that is a non-assigned position within our staffing plan. We have talked to the Sheriff's Department about this, they, they understand what that means. We've allowed them to be outside of, out of the staffing plan, because they've got vacancies throughout the organization, so it really wasn't impacting the budget necessarily that you assigned to the Sheriff's Department. We would like to bring that into compliance. We would like to have them firm it up, and either have this board approve another detective in the Detective Bureau, or move a position from a different division to the Detective Bureau, so that we can appropriately budget those costs. The reason that's important, the detectives are 4% higher than a road patrol deputy, so each time that they're using funds outside of their division, it's disparately impacting the budget, because we're not, we didn't anticipate the cost for the 4% increase. So that is one item. The CIP item, we've already, we had a CIP presentation today, we'd like to put, put a pin in the CIP soon. And there's just other discussions about, you know, what do we want to do? Do we want to have potential planning? We're going to have a presentation by Maxwell coming up soon about the concept, what could a planning purpose look like in the county? And just wanted to put it on your radar, essentially.
If we're going to have that planning purpose, commentary...
If we're going to have that planning purpose conversation, I'd like that Community Service that we survey, I mean, come back and that be a tool that we look at and use.
Yep.
So the National Community Survey, feedback will come back with that planning discussion?
Yep. That is his plan, and it's our intention, recognizing that we're late in the year to add, you know, a certain amount of money for, also, I'll have to wait on that, I think. There are a couple other items coming to you potentially for employee benefits that you may want to consider. But yes, the presentation on planning will certainly be a reflection of the NRC survey and what we could do.
Yeah. Do you ever find that people are reluctant to participate in National Community Surveys or the American Community Survey or Census? But yet it's so beneficial to our county residents to participate in those. I think it's a good way to advocate for the importance of participation in that.
We can advocate better for people's participation. They're mailed to a certain number of residents. I've had good response with that. But there's also an online presence that most people, they could use that in to help us have more responses. But ultimately, statistically valid information coming back to the county about what we do right and what we do wrong is very valuable.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
So I'll, sorry, go ahead.
The last thing is a performance audit. I've, we've talked about it a few different times about having an audit. Those funds are not currently within the budget. So if we're going to earmark a certain amount of money for an audit, you know, we're, I'm going to guess that's a $300,000 expense. We just have to know that sooner than later.
Audit for what? I'm sorry, missed that.
Operational audit.
Operational audit.
Okay.
There's been discussion about this, not, not only this year, but previously, about how are we doing? Do we have what we need? Do we have too much? Are we in, I guess, best practices as compared to other counties? Are we in line with them, or are we out of line in certain areas? So I think it's a fair request to say, let's take a look at our operations and see where we are.
So I would assume that an operational audit will identify potential efficiencies at least to off, you know, at least equal to the cost of the audit, right? An operational audit, if we spend $300,000 on it, I would expect we'll find at least $300,000 worth of efficiency within the, within the county. And I think we could commit that we're going to execute and implement, you know, at least the amount of the cost of the audit in, in terms of it not just being a shell, a study that we sit on a shelf, that we're committed to following through on at least some of its recommendations. I assume it will identify far more than the cost of the audit in terms of efficiencies.
Well, and as we go forward, we're talking about, as was just presented, bonding out, what, $200 million with the projects, not including the airports, full faith and credit. So as we go talk about building buildings and putting these things together, I think it's irresponsible to the taxpayer not to have a good idea where we can save some money, or where we're losing money because we're being inefficient, or how to be more efficient. I mean, that's what we're here for. So $300,000 is what, a 50th of a percentile point compared to the projects we're building?
More and more of these kind of approaches are including AI in its understanding of how you're doing things and how AI might play a role in efficiency. I'm assuming that'll be looked at. I mean, it's new, right? I don't know how many people are doing this and also have AI expertise in running government, but...
Well, I think what we as a board will have some say at what some of the focuses are or what we're looking for on that operational audit, besides just best practices as we move forward.
Right. Because government moves very slowly, and a best practice and, you know, what is considered a best practice is probably outdated at this point.
If you're talking about AI, that'll be outdated by the time the study's done.
Right, but it's better than it is, you know?
It's better than no study, yeah.
That is correct. That is very correct.
So I just want to share with the board that the salary retention ad hoc, obviously, retention is an issue potentially where we could see efficiencies, right? Where if all the HR department does is hire people, they never get to supporting training for managers to be better managers and increase retention. So that's one opportunity that potentially we see some benefit. But I did want to share that this, that that ad hoc has voted, to my knowledge, Chair will correct me if I'm wrong, to support for the 2026 budget, a, an annual, a match for retirement that's available across the board to, to the entire workforce, whether they're part-time, long-term, new, you know, at all employees of up to $1,000. And, and that's in the 457 account. So it's unlike the MERS account, which you get one shot to join the day you join, you've become an employee at the county. And then you are, even if you came in as a CO, you know, part-time Commission on Aging person, and you transition into a full-time facilities person, you never get to go back and, and add in that benefit. This is, this is different. This is an option. And Donna Kinsey's talked to two different providers. They are prepared to do this. I believe Dean has looked at the, how that would impact our, our overall budget. It's a personnel cost. We think it's, this is a better alternative to just a longevity pay option to incentivize people to stick with a little piece. But it's a way to hopefully entice employees to want to work here or keep working here.
Is that what you were referencing?
It was, but I recognize that we have a meeting coming up early December to kind of finalize that, I think. But I didn't, and that group has done a lot of good work. They're, they've considered a lot of options, great discussions about wage increases and longevity and all, all that goes with it. So this is an option that we can match dollar for dollar, up to $1,000 per employee, or whatever, whatever amount the board feels is appropriate. And it would incentivize employees to put something into their 457 account.
Is the ad hoc recommending a wage study, or is that part of the operations audit?
We are waiting for legal counsel to give us some input on the pros and cons of doing a wage study in 2026 ahead of the renegotiating contracts. There are pros and cons to doing a wage study when you're about to open a renegotiation. So we, it feels like a good idea, but we've also just got a few red flags that have come up that we're being asked to just be more intentional about that recommendation.
And Matt is hidden away on vacation, far, far away from his computer, so.
Good for him. We have to wait.
Should all follow his lead on that. Anything else?
I think that's it.
Anyone over here? We're going to go to, let's go to the Commissioner Department reports, and if there's nothing else on the agenda. Anybody?
Happy Thanksgiving.
Yeah.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
So to that point, I think the Agenda Studying Committee agreed to cancel the study session immediately preceding Thanksgiving.
They did.
I was assuming we weren't meeting that ready, but, okay.
Safe assumption, safe assumption.
Good choice.
I think we're also thinking of canceling the meeting, I think it's the day before Christmas?
New Year's Eve, or Christmas Eve, yeah.
Yeah.
Is that okay with everyone?
Unless you really want to.
Well, I really hope that we pass, I mean, I really hope that we pass the budget by then, but we're, we're on the similar timeline as last year right now, so.
But we're doing better things, maybe, bigger things.
We did see a draft early.
We did. So that's for that. Second public comment? No? We eat notices? We're out. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Two minutes, two minutes is here.